So the meeting is called to order. Brian or Steve, do you want to do a roll call?
Sure, I'll start. Mr. Williams?
Present.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Rowena?
Present.
Mr. Shulman?
Here.
Ms. Lankowski?
Here.
Mr. Bryce?
Here.
And Ms. Wells?
Here.
Okay, I have a corner.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much. Diana, you will be seated for all matters. We have one, two, three, four, five regular commissioners. You're the sixth, so you be seated for all matters.
Okay, thank you, Galen.
And we will start with 2025-78-24 referral, City of Norwalk, 779 and 7789, Connecticut Avenue. Temporary construction easement for the City of Norwalk.
So.
Representing the city?
Yeah, I'll take care of it, Galen. All TMPs is, I think they're at a Wall Street event tonight, but as part of the Costco application that you guys recently approved, one of the conditions of approval was that the city would look at, and Costco would look at putting a sidewalk in front of that stretch, eventually putting hopefully a sidewalk over the bridge along Connecticut Avenue there. So as part of that, the city would look into getting grants to do that work. But in order to apply for grants, we would need to have an easement over the property of where the sidewalk would go. So this is kind of like a preemptive step to let the city apply for grants to put the sidewalk in.
Move approval of the easement?
Richard seconded. All those in favor, we can do it by a show of hands perhaps? All those opposed? It's unanimous, I think it's.
I didn't, you didn't call for abstentions. I abstained.
And you also will be seated, Anna, going forward.
Oh, fun. Okay.
The next matter is 2025-61 SPR, 38 Lois LLC and One Bishop LLC. 38 Lois Street and One Bishop Street. Site plan review application for the construction of two townhouse buildings for a total of 12 dwelling units. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I am.
Wonderful.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody Torrent Sandec in Hennessy 1055 Washington Boulevard in Stamford. I represent the owners of the property 38 Lois LLC and One Bishop LLC. Present tonight also are Fred Cohen, he is a principal and the owner, Andy Sumalidis, professional engineer with Landtech, Colin Grothier and Lance Pariso of Beinfield Architecture, the project architects, Eric Rains, landscape architect, those, that is our development team. And if there are any questions of any of them throughout, throughout this process, we'd be happy to answer them. An application for site plan review was submitted on July 31st. Neighbors were notified, very certificate of mailing on July 31st, and that certificate was returned to staff and should be in the permanent file. The applicants before you, as I said, are 38 Lois LL Street and One Bishop LLC. The property, Andy, if you wouldn't mind screen sharing the survey, if you could. The property is located, again, at 38 Lois Street and One Bishop Street, District 5, Block 15, Lots 226 and 31. Property is just about a half an acre in size with the two lots combined. So the outline in yellow are the two lots. The northern lot that Andy just circled is improved with a single-family dwelling that was constructed around 1964. And the southern or, yeah, the southerly property that he's circling is improved with an office building constructed around 1974. Both have associated parking on their respective lots. There is an inland wetland and water course off-site. And because of that, there is an upland review area that extends onto the property 100 feet. So this, the applicants appeared before and secured approval from the Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Agency on August 26th for a significant activity application. The proposal before you is a site plan application. Under your regulations, we propose to demolish both structures, then redevelop the site as one parcel with 12 townhouse units in two separate buildings, approximately 18 parking spaces. There would be new stormwater and sewage systems, lighting and other improvements that the other consultants will explain to you in just a bit. We have received sign-offs from the Fire Department, First Taxing District. Transportation, Mobility and Parking shared one final comment with us yesterday. And Mr. Sumalidis responded to that, so I see no reason why TMP would not issue its sign-off. We were hoping to receive the Department of Public Works and WPCA sign-offs today. I suspect they'll come in tomorrow or on Friday, as all questions that they asked have been answered. The Health Department also was expected to rescind its sign-off. But Bill Mooney expects to issue that before the week's out, and that was per an email that I received from him this afternoon about 4:30. That's generally the application in a nutshell, site plan review. Take two lots, combine them into one, redevelop them into 12 dwelling units. And at this point, if Mr. Sumalidis would be kind enough to go through the site plan with you, he'll be followed by Eric Rains and then Colin Grothier. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have. So at this point, Mr. Sumalidis.
Good evening. My name is Andy Sumalidis. I'm a principal and professional engineer with Landtech out of Westport. We were retained to do the survey, environmental and site civil engineering for this project. As you heard earlier, we obtained conservation approval. There is a stream that dumps into a culvert, and the culvert actually goes through our property to a catch basin, and it gets piped through the town drainage system right at the border of our property. You could see here, the driveways are accessed off of Lois Street for both properties. They're, they're pretty decent sized curb cuts. And you're about to see in our proposed conditions how we rearrange that with one curb cut to access both properties and fronting the, the buildings right along the street. So this is our site layout plan. As mentioned earlier, there's 12 total units, four housed in this structure and the balance of the eight fronting along Bishop. This frontage here gets improved, all new curbing, sidewalk landscaping, which you'll see in a little bit, and kind of realigning the road. So the road is extra wide here. We work closely with TMP with the new complete streets guidance of providing the necessary, you know, pedestrian access along, around our entire frontage. New sidewalks along Bishop as well, and along Fulham Road also. Access to the site is off of Fulham Road here, two-way access. You come in off of Fulham and these townhouses have garage, garages here, which you'll see in the architectural shortly. And you drive through the site and come underneath the building here for additional parking underneath these townhouses. And there's some additional parking spaces out in the open here with some amenities, shade structures and the such, which we'll hear more about from the Landscape Architect shortly. In terms of stormwater improvements, currently there's no treatment or detention happening on-site. There is an existing catch basin here that gets piped directly into that culvert I mentioned earlier. This is where the stream gets piped into our culvert through our property. There's an easement in favor of the town for that, goes through our property and continues through the town's drainage system. What we are proposing is underground detention here, which both promotes infiltration and also reduces the peak flow rates for up to the 100-year storm events. We also added a pretreatment for all the paved areas as required by the town's drainage manual. So what that is, is basically one of those swirl chambers, and it takes out sediment and hydrocarbons and the such. So you have pre-treatment and then the primary treatment through the infiltration system. And then we discharge back into that same pipe that it currently does. So we're basically taking all that impervious area that's going in untreated and treating it on-site and then discharging it out. All new utilities to service the building, so you'll have separate sewer and water for both facilities currently. Electric is overhead, and we plan to trench underneath Lois Street, do a new transformer to service both buildings. So all brand-new utilities servicing both buildings. And then lastly, you know, the necessary erosion and sediment controls. We've added nomenclature to the plan regarding contractor parking and making sure no contractors are parking on the streets and prohibiting vault flow of vehicular traffic. So we plan to park all vehicles on-site during construction. That, you know, is in a nutshell, our presentation on the site civil side. Happy to answer any questions at this point or pass it off. Hearing now, no takers, we'll pass it along.
Mr. Rains, perhaps?
Certainly, thank you. I think Lance is going to pull up our images. The site configuration that we just went through is where Jones, where, where the new driveway is. As you turn off of that driveway, you travel toward the center of the site. And if you see those, those hatched areas around the middle of the surface parking spots that, that Andy mentioned, those are, it's a porous paver so that, so that as water, as, you know, as we have a rain event, water would permeate through them to, to help supplement the groundwater recharge. And also the, on the more aesthetic reason to, to do it is to have the, the scent, the sort of the core of the property look and feel different than the approach and, and the perimeter. So the decorative paving would enhance that, that, that atmosphere that'll support to the low, to just below that, you'll see those tables and chairs where there's a gathering area with two grills, so the residents would have an outdoor amenity space that they could use that would be separated from the street with both planting and with, with a fence, so that they have a little, a little privacy and separation from the street. Planting is a mixture of evergreens, perennials, grasses and deciduous trees. Both on, on Bishop and on Lois, we, the, the goal was to get, get as many trees as possible, so the street would have more of a tree-lined effect. So you'll see that coming down Lois and then across the bottom on Bishop and around the corner there. And then there's also some interior sight lighting that, that would be done for, to help circulation in the evenings and, and support the use of the, of the ingress and egress out of the property. That's generally the site configured, I mean, the plant, the landscape architecture part of, beyond the configuration. All the, all the planting selections are in there in the drawings and as well as an example of the, of what the lighting fixture would look like. So if there aren't any questions.
So I have a question. Um, how large are the trees on the Fulham side of the property where they're all smaller, single-family homes? And there's currently a lot of natural vegetation along that particular border that looks like it's been, it will be removed for the new building?
It will. You can see where the new driveway is coming in. There's a very faint symbols, those with the, exactly, that, that's where the new driveway is coming in, and it will, and it's where that existing vegetation is. The, the, we've, we've got, we have two new trees on the Fulham side that are canopy trees. So there would be a larger scale tree that would, that would help buffer the, this building from the, from the street and from the neighbors across the street.
How large would the trees be in comparison with the facade of the building?
Colin, or if Colin or Lance, if you'll go to the plant thing plan. So all of those tree, let me follow that leader. I can't remember exactly the specification.
I'm really asking how tall that would be.
Right, and I. Well, go to the plant list, Colin, on the, on the, on the sheet, if you would. If you'll zoom into that. So those would be the, if you see the second symbol there, the seven tulip trees, those are going in at two and a half inch caliper, but they will grow to be 40, 35, 40 feet tall and even, even 50 at times. So they'll, they will be at or greater than the height of the facade.
And they couldn't go in a little larger?
They, they could go in larger. At this planting, they'll be about 15 feet tall. If we went to say a three-inch caliper, which is the next size up, it would be more like, more like an 18 to 20 foot tall. And what we found is, is, you know, three inches is a good size. They're two and a half to three. It, two to two and a half is, is enough, it's big enough so that it has a defined canopy. But the scale of the next size bigger, you'll, you'll get a larger canopy. So I don't see why we couldn't go to the next size up.
Thank you. I think it would help the transition to the, the neighbors.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Rains? Okay, Mr. Grothier?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present this project. As you've kind of already seen the site stuff, we're looking 12 units, 18 parking spaces on-site. All of the 12 units are essentially two, three bed, two to three-bedroom units, two defined bedrooms with a a third bedroom or a flex space that can also be used as a bedroom. It's providing one space per unit and some guests parking spaces. One of those units would be an affordable workforce unit, because our requirement at 12 units on-site is 1.2. And a three-bedroom is equal to two workforce units. One three-bedroom unit would be count as the, those two workforce units. So one unit is what's being provided. This is a traditional transitional neighborhood. The surrounding context is generally industrial low-rise and kind of late urban. So we selected a multi-story townhome style for these units, as Attorney Suchi said. You're looking at the, the smaller of the two buildings. This is a four-unit townhouse that's four stories. You have an elevated front stoop that gives each unit its, its own private entry. So, you know, it sends an ownership, really feels like your own individual house, which it essentially is. And then you have the four-unit building has two spaces for each townhouse inside a private garage and then a private roof terrace along with the, the bedrooms and associated program inside the first level, as you see, as you'll see a little, a little bit. I'll take you through the plans on that. You've kind of got a split level. We've got a little bit of a grade change coming in from the, the back of the site. Site entry here, so it slopes down mildly here. So there's a little bit of a differing elevation between the, the back and the front. So you have a little bit of a split level at the first, first floor, where the garage is below the, the front kind of flex space. And then you've got your main living space on the second level. The next level, you have your, your sleeping quarters, and then there's a roof terrace kind of flex space that allows access to the, the two sides of the roof. More specifically, get to the plans. So just in a little bit more detail, you've got the garage, a flex space, some mechanical space in the garage, the main living with your, your kitchen, your living and dining, a powder room, bedroom programs, so two bedrooms, laundry, associated bathrooms, and then the flex space up top with the, with the roof terrace. Back to the other building.
Mr. Grothier, as you're showing us this, can you point out which unit is going to be the affordable unit?
Sure. So we selected one of the, one of the, the eight-unit building or the, from the eight unit. And this is the most prevalent unit style, so we just mixed it in there with the, with the ones that are, you know, most equal. Didn't, got a couple slightly smaller units here, so we didn't pick one of those. We picked the, the most common unit type to provide that, so. Back to the.
Are these going to be rental units or condominium? Any plan on selling?
Liz's ownership on, do you know the indication on that? I've heard probably in both ways, but I think they landed on rental.
My understanding is it's rental at this point.
Okay.
Let's see. Eight-minute building. Actually, I want to go back to rendering. So this is the, this is the building that is proposed for Bishop Street. Again, very similar to the other one. The concept here was that we'd take a, a simple form, gable mass and extrude that throughout the building and then have that intervention with townhouse elements that projected towards the street that created a nice recess for the private stoops. It gives you a nice landing pad and a nice private entry. And that also addresses the street, provides some in-and-out activity, and you also get that, again, that sense of ownership and individuality with these. We trended the sidewalk a little bit more towards the street in this one to provide more mature plantings and, and canopy trees up against the building. We felt like the larger, in talking with Eric, his office, the larger volume of soil provided would allow the trees to, to grow and mature better on that side of the street if we kept the, the volume of soil contiguous with the planting beds and not split it with the sidewalk. Onto the plans. These ones do have a common garage, so you're coming in from the, the site entry on Fulham and entering a common garage, you break off, and then you've got individual parking bays for the units above. And then some associated mechanical indoor storage and then access, direct access for your, for your individual dwelling unit. There's a door positioned on Lois Street that provides egress from the garage and also provides a sense of entry there. I can go back and show you that. So that was a nice change. So we've provided a, a canopy in a, in a entrance from the garage there that makes that, helps that building address the street and that street corner, it being more prominent corner on the site, so it doesn't feel like it's just a stark wall with no entrances that'll be used. So I think people will actually use that to get in and out of the garage. Main level, living, so this is the level slightly above the street. And then we've got the next two levels. The uppermost level has two private terraces, front and rear, similar to the other building. A little bit tight on space here, so those ones don't get the rear space, but they still get the space fronting on Bishop Street. We do have some solar, integrated solar on this front, on this building as it meets the, exceeds the threshold requirements for the sustainability measures. So the, the solar arrays are provided for the regulations. The other building is below the threshold requirements. So it does not, it's not required to have those sustainability measures. Composition, very regimented townhouse style, so it breaks up the facade though to provide those stoops that I was talking about. And Eric Rains' office has provided nice front dooryard gardens that really soften it and provide some color and softness to that streetscape and hopefully some shade when the canopy trees mature. A little bit of a grade change, so you see the, the stoops lengthen.
Mr. Grothier, how would you characterize this development? Is this a luxury development, sort of missing middle development?
I, I think product-wise and, and like what, what Norwalk's looking for, I would say it, it would probably qualify as missing middle, but it's, you know, market-wise, it's probably slightly above market rate, I think is what they're going for. But it is a housing typology that is, that's needed here, and this is, you know, compared to the things that Beinfield's usually in front of you with, this is, you know, much smaller than what we usually deal with. But it's a, it's a good use of the site. It's not overly dense. I think you're getting, you know, a, a good variety of housing here. You're getting some units that are slightly larger with the two-car garage. You're getting some with a shared garage. Slightly differing widths in those, so the, the square footage is a little bit different. And, you know, you're getting something that's not a, a single-family lot. And it's, it's well organized, you know, it's like a, there, there aren't a lot of projects. Well, I shouldn't say that. There are a lot of projects that I'm happy to work on, but, you know, in terms of making a, a street, you don't always get the opportunity to kind of, you know, create a tree-lined street and transition from an industrial to a, a single-family residential neighborhood. So I think, you know, especially considering what's there, you know, there's an, an office building that's getting refurbished that's, you know, low-rise and there's a lot of impervious coverage, as I think Andy said, and there's also some very extensive curb cuts on, on Lois Street. So reducing those and actually eliminating all the curb cuts on Bishop and Lois Street, I think is a huge positive for the walkability of the neighborhood and, you know, allowing those residents that are on Fulham further up Lois Street to, to have a, an improved sidewalk to access this area of Route 1 is is probably a, a big positive and really cleaning up the neighborhood in the, in the street corner there, so.
And are you combining the two properties into a single project? Or are these two?
We are.
Standalone?
We are, yes, so they're.
Well, if, if I may, question for staff. If this is a single project, even though they're two separate buildings, can't we hold their feet to the fire in terms of solar on the roofs for the entire project?
It's a good question. I think the, the way the wording of that specific text is, it applies to the area of the building. So that's something, if you wanted us to take a look at down the road, we could. I, I, I kind of wish that was on both buildings too, but the text does state per building, so it looks at each one individually.
Okay. I have one just general comment about this. This is kind of a hidden project. You know, it's, it's off the main thoroughfare. It's, it's not going to be visible from Route 1. It's kind of hidden back there on Lois, and I appreciate the fact that so much care has gone into its design. So many of the projects we see that are kind of hidden like this are of much lower quality. And I appreciate this.
No, thank, thank you. Can I, can I address some of the sustainability just really quickly? One note on that that I did have, and I was gonna, I was gonna bring it up before you asked the question. Both, you know, these are both new build, buildings, right? This isn't rehabilitation. So the newer codes really, in, in, you know, equipment specs really go a long way towards addressing some of the, the energy deficiencies in, in older buildings. So with the newer insulation requirements and air tightness, that's going to go a long way towards minimizing energy usage of these buildings in a meaningful way. So, you know, use of, of good insulation, air sealing. The, one of the partners in this, I believe, is looking at European-style windows that typically exceed energy requirements of the current code that Connecticut has adopted. So they perform very well from a, a thermal and, and air leakage standpoint. So, you know, that combined with the air barriers and the insulation requirements is really gonna, you know, keep the energy usage low. Your, your heating, your heating isn't gonna leak out of the building. Your cooling is gonna stay in the building. And all that will be controlled. And if they go with, even if they go with, you know, gas-fired furnace, those are, those are very efficient these days, and that energy is gonna stay within the building. If they go with a, an electric key pump, then it'll be, you know, a very low emission building from a lot standpoint. So energy efficiency is something that's kind of built into the code at this point, and as long as you, you know, cross your i's and dot your t's and your contractor does a good job, I think it's gonna be, they're gonna be a quality product. So that being said, if we want to look, this is essentially the same plan as the other ones. It's a little bit different because it's a slightly skinnier unit, but you have the, the carport from the common garage with a couple storage and mechanical closets, private access from the, the common garage up to a, a main living level. And then we've got access to your stoop that brings you right out to the street. Stair to go upstairs, two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and then upstairs to the, to the flex space and the roof terraces. Materiality, this is a, a rich. Um, materiality, uh, this is a, a rich and sophisticated palette. Uh, with warm wood tones and other accents to contrast that sophisticated pot palette. As I said, high quality windows and doors, decorative lighting are going to complete the major elements. And we're using some extruded architectural cladding to break up the, uh, the fiber cement siding that's being used on the principal facades. Uh, and you're also going to see stone veneer, uh, at the base of the building and, uh, likely landscape walls as well. Um, that was pretty much the extent of the presentation. If you want to see any other, um, views, I've got the elevations as well as, uh, sections. If you want any questions to ask, but, um.
Question out of ignorance, um, I perhaps, uh, am wrongly under the impression uh, that, uh, cyber, uh, the, pardon me, fiber cement, uh, couldn't be used in lower sections of, uh, buildings. Am I, am I wrong about that?
Um, there are limitations on it. I don't believe we're proposing it, uh, below, below or adjacent to grade. So the, one of the purposes of the veneer is to, to elevate the, the siding up a little bit. Um, but I, I don't know the specific distance, but I, I don't think it's any different than, um, than wood where you need to hold it up a little bit. It's a, it's a decent, um, product, but is the, the concern damage?
Yeah, uh, I've, uh, I've seen, um, uh, buildings, uh, where people, uh, have kicked the cyber cement and it cracks and breaks.
Hmm. Um, I mean, it is pretty durable from, uh, from impact, but it's not, uh, it's not, um, unbreakable, you know, very few things are. So, uh, w- we found that it's, it's, uh, it's, it's a good quality product for our, for a lot of our, our projects. So. That answer your question?
Uh, yeah.
Roundabout.
It answers my question. I, I'm going to ask staff to just check the regulations to make sure that I'm wrong about that.
Yeah, we can check.
Thank you.
Do you have anything, um, sort of like this picture we're looking at now, but that shows what the view will be from the house that's currently on the corner of, I think Fulham and Lois. Right now their view is sort of of trees and then a single family house and like, what are they going to be looking at now?
Um, this is probably the closest. We didn't render every angle of the house, but, um, I could pull up the, uh, give me a second. I'll try to pull up. We'll go. That's acceptable. Um, one of the things that's, uh, interesting about that, that I was trying to remember as we were starting the hearing is I think they're elevated. No, that one's not elevated. It's the one in the store. So, uh, these are the trees that would be coming out to, to facilitate the new driveway. Um, there is.
There it is.
Yep. So, so that would change, but there's not, not going to be any change to this tree line. I think we discovered in, in, um, discussions with the, uh, inland wetlands, uh, board that, uh, that those were, are off the property. And largely going to be untouched, I, I think by a relatively, uh, reasonable margin too. So I don't think they're, they're, you know, not where, um, I don't, I haven't marked them all, but, um, I think they're a few feet off the property line. Um, according to the investigations that the civil engineer does, you may remember where they, where they flagged them. Um, but that would just be the, an access driveway and it, it'll be, uh, as the other commissioner noted, the, you know, they look at larger caliber trees to plant there. It'll be landscaped. That'll be a nice driveway. And most of those trees, the mature canopy trees are not going to change except for the ones on, on the site where the building is going to be.
And Colin, also, um, oh, this is Eric Rains. Um, also, I think the driveway aligns more with the house across the street than the facade of the building does. So.
So it wouldn't be a, 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 a big, uh, encumbrance there.
Right. They wouldn't, it would, exactly. It's not like they're directly across from it.
Yeah.
And do we know, um, do people currently park on Fulham and Lois Street? Is that street wide enough to have sort of on-street spill over parking?
Um, you're talking about adding, or are you asking if we can potentially add on-street parking or?
No, I'm.
You're just asking.
I'm asking, I'm asking in general, um, and maybe if there are any neighbors that are going to participate in the public hearing. You know, how parking on that street typically is used? How wide the street is, whether if, if a bunch of cars, cars start parking on one side of the street? Will that mean that cars can't pass each other? Is that going to cause problems? Um, or is it sort of already being used? Um, as on-street parking and this will just be, you know, a few extra cars looking for a spot? And I know you may not be able to answer that question. That, that is the question that is coming to my mind.
I mean, I will say that we meet the parking regulations, uh, adopted by the city and we do have, there is internal space on site for, uh, a little bit of extra parking for visitors. And then, uh, it, as Eric noted, these, uh, these areas here um, were worked out, it, it not a requirement, but we felt it was prudent to provide some, uh, in reinforced turf or, um, in a soft scape that would be pervious, but would allow a larger vehicle like an Amazon truck. Or, you know, if one of these tenants was moving in or out, that they could park the larger vehicle there and be able to, to T-turn without taking up, um, additional parking resources. So we really wanted to kind of have an invisible, um, or two invisible parking loading spaces that could be, could be used for vehicular motions. Um, so, you know, there, the driveway is, uh, is sized adequate for backup space. I, I think behind the building, that's, it's a little, it's seated as, as well. So, um, it being much like, uh, uh, you know, some private, a private house community, um, you're not going to have the, the volume of traffic coming in and out of, out of here until somebody's parked at the back.
Also, keep in mind that the transportation, mobility and parking department reviewed not only the miss plan, but was engaged with the, um, civil engineers, with the architects and, and everyone else to devise the plan that best appro- that best, um, addresses Lois Street, the, the turn in Lois Street. And this plan reflects their input, um, as is, and if it wasn't clear, the driveway that exists between the two properties that provides access to the existing office building, that's going to be eliminated. So it, it makes it safer on the street, allows for continuous sidewalk. I don't, the only driveway in and out is off Fulham. But T M P did review this, had suggestions, had numerous meetings and discussions with, um, the entire team to come up with the site plan that you see today. Anyone else have any other questions for the team? That concludes our presentation to you. We'd like just to let you know that this proposal, uh, complies with the building standards, the private landscape standards, grading, tree removal and drainage, the site plan review standards, those are all set forth in the application that was submitted. But just to reiterate, um, it provides proper and adequate access to and from the property from Fulham. The development complies with all applicable development and site construction requirements. Uh, the site is and will continue to be served by all utilities. Uh, there are no proposed new easements, but the drainage easement that exists today will be maintained and will not be affected. Um, the site plans, uh, that we've been referring to have been referred to all the agencies that exercise jurisdiction and authority over the review of this project. And as I indicated before, most of those have either been secured or should be forthcoming within the next few days. Um, and lastly, we did indicate in our application that since the site will generate far less than 500 trips per day or for 50 vehicle trips per hour, that no traffic report is necessary for this project. It's site plan review. Uh, we asked that you move this forward and act upon it this evening. And, um, that concludes our presentation. If you have any questions for either Mr. Rains, Mr. Sumilites or Mr. Growth here, we're certainly happy to answer them.
Hey, does anybody have any questions? Any further questions?
Not for the applicant, but for staff, if they had, uh, any comments on the application.
No, no, at this point there were, um, there was back and forth and we did meet with the applicant and his team a couple of different times, including one time where we had T M P and D P W involved because, because of the road, uh, the, that corner there and how things were going to link up. Um, they did provide us with some revised plans this week, including, um, site plan review comments and, and in response to what D P W and T M P put together, staff had asked them to look at the corner building, the longer one, to see what they could do to soften that up. And they did do, um, put the canopy on in the entrance. So I think that, that's a step in the right direction. I think, you know, uh, uh, the, you know, kind of more of an editorial comment. I think this would be an interesting case once it's built to, to kind of look at it in terms of scope and scale. Cause this, this property is kind of on, as was discussed on the transition between the commercial zone and the, where you get into traditional, single family. So it'll be interesting to see kind of how it actually fits in in terms of scope and scale.
If there are no further questions, does anyone have a motion to?
Sorry, real quick, real quick question. Where's the, you said that there, they softened up a corner, they put in a, they put in something to make the building look better?
Canopy.
Canopy.
The canopy.
They put a canopy in at an entrance. I don't know if there's a straight on shot that shows that, but that's the side view.
There is.
Uh, I got it. And so I don't, I'm looking at, um.
You're looking at the end elevation from, uh, sorry, two end elevations. You're looking, I, I forget what the, the back street is. That's, that's this. Lost my pointer. Hold on. Um, this is the one that's, uh, facing the Pepperidge Farm parking lot. And then this is the, the lowest, uh, lowest street. Um, so we added the door, uh, to provide a, a sense of entry and some architectural lighting. Uh, and then also the canopy to, uh, to show that it's an entrance. Uh, and, you know, something that's fronting on the street and has some, some usefulness to it as opposed to, uh, uh, a, a solid wall that doesn't have any permeability. So, um, that was the, we also added some planters up against the building to kind of soften that, that wall scale at the, at the sidewalk level.
I'm looking in the materials at the document that shows like the different, uh, you know, there's going to be a stone foundation. What the front stoop's going to look like. Yeah, that one. And I'm looking at that picture sort of compared to the next one down in the deck or the next two down in the deck. And I'm wondering like, what I'm missing. It, it doesn't look like the same building, frankly, the one with the, this one that we're looking at looks not as nice as the next two slides. So I just wanted to, is this the same view?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you mean by the next two slides. You mean the renderings?
Uh, in our, in our materials. Yeah, the renderings.
The renderings. Okay. Uh, yeah. So it's, um, sometimes it doesn't always translate the best you want in the drawings, but, uh, the, the materials that are intended to be the same, uh, and should be represented. Sometimes when you're pulling the manufacturer, uh, images as opposed to the, the rendered image, it's a, it's a little, a little different. But the idea is that this is a textured, uh, stone veneer. And then we've got the, the fiber cement siding in that rich espresso color. Um, typically we like a, a smooth lap siding. Um, and then this is, uh, is that one? I think that's an extruded architectural product.
I'm looking at this building. I, I, I'm not a fan of this building. But the other two buildings look much nicer. I'm just trying to make sure this wasn't one of the changes.
Only two buildings.
Yeah. It's like this version of the, it, nevermind. I'm confusing things. We can move on.
Oh.
Is it the case that the, the renderings are like showing the materials in like the sunlight, whereas here it's more of a, a flat image of the materials? Is, is, is that the difference between this drawing and rendering?
Potentially.
I hope it looks more like the renderings than this.
It, it should.
The end of the day.
Yeah, it should look much more like this.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, does anybody have a motion they'd like to make?
Hey Galen, this is Chapin. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second? Anna, second? Uh, can we go to the, um, to the resolution? Uh, let's see.
Give me one second. Just scroll down slowly.
Okay, here we are.
So just to, I'll, I'll go through, but the yellow, um, the yellow highlight just reflects the, um, revised plans that were submitted in response to staff comments.
Okay. Otherwise it's, it's what we have and we do.
Correct. And I did add, um, I've made the assumption you might want to just confirm, uh, that I added comment number eight in response to, um, Ms. Lankowski's comments about the caliper size of the tree. So if you wanted to, it might be a good idea if, uh, whoever made the motion seconded it, if they were okay with including that or not.
Okay then, Anna, you okay with that?
I'm okay with including that.
Anna?
Sounds good.
And 12 is also in response to, um, the last, um, a very technical comment from T M P about the driveway. So that's a new comment as well. And I think the other comments, uh, references to T M P and D P W may be a little redundant at this point, but it's probably good just to leave them in, just to, just to be sure.
Right.
And there was one other question that Lou brought up earlier about the, uh, material, i- if the regulations suggest that the materials are not allowed to use at a certain, is that something we need as a condition here? Or is that something that you guys would handle as a part of?
Like, I, I did check. Um, it was a cementous, cementous siding, which is permitted in the C D three C. Okay.
Okay.
And then I have September 26th was kind of the placeholder date, assuming if you're going to move forward, I think that's okay.
Right. Okay. Now, where, does anybody have any further comments or are we ready to go to a roll call? Any further comments? Steve, can we do a roll call?
Certainly, uh, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Hi, I was trying to speak before, but nobody could hear me. My mic was on mute, but I actually did have a question about the resolution. Is it too late?
No, I think, I think it's okay. I, you want me to pull it back up?
Yeah, I just, I just saw it's just conflicting. That's all. I just wanted to make sure what I was reading.
Let me just make sure I get the right one. I think this is it.
Okay, let me go back to it.
Hey, JJ, are you satisfied that this is the one you're voting on?
Y- yeah, I was just, when I saw it, I'm, so I see, um, prepared by Land Tech, but then on B, it's prepared by, um, Binfield.
Yeah, that's a separate, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Did the architecture, Land Tech did the, um.
Okay, it's a collaboration. Okay, got it. Okay. And then, um, the workforce housing availability, that's what I was trying to read and you went too fast. Okay.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yeah. Um, if we filed on our primary record, it's part of the intuitive certificate. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Sure. All good. I can close it up. All right. So just to affirm, uh, Mr. Williams was yes, and, and Ms. Jordan Byron, you were up next.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. DeBachnick?
Yes.
And I believe Ms. Wells, your last.
Yeah.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you, everyone, for your attention and your, your kind discussion about this project. We look forward to moving forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners. Appreciate your time.
Okay, we will move on to our next matter. It's a public hearing. It's 2025-48 SP, 284 New Canaan Avenue. After the fact, cleaning at 15,000 square feet to be restored with plantings. We'll have a public hearing, report and recommended action. Who is here representing the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Brian Carey. I'm with Land Tech. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Penna Construction. Land Tech, as you know, is a civil environmental firm located in Westport, Connecticut. Just, just as far as my background is concerned, I'm a professional wetland scientist. And it is Connecticut State Licensed Arborist and Landscape Designer. So the application that's in front of you, if I could just share my screen real quick. This is in order to resolve, can you see that on the screen? It's picture. So the application that is pending in front of you is to resolve some trees that were removed in an area along this portion of the property. Back in October 2024, the property owner received a violation notice from the Inland Wetlands Agency and also the Planning and Zoning Agency for the clear cut of approximately 15,000 square feet of trees. That was done based on some bad advice that they have received. Basically, the, the application at this point is, we're just here to have you approve our proposed mitigation plan, which has been through a regular rigorous permitting process with the Conservation Commission, which basically restores all of the trees that were removed from this area on a one to three basis. The total, the total area to be restored is approximately 21,000 square feet. 15,000 square feet were cleared, but we are adding additional plantings along a transitional zone to provide additional screening. So you can see the hashed area on our site plan is the actual area that was cleared and will be restored. The, the proposed plantings include the replanting of 65 native trees. Basically, we have, if you've reviewed the site plan planting scheme, we have four, three to four different, or four, I'm sorry, four native types of trees, red maple, black gum, and swamp white oak, which are, which are medable to the soil conditions out here. We're basically planting those in two and a half inch caliper high trees, which are large trees. The understory will include 250 native shrubs that, again, the plan shows will be a mix of common spice bush, speckled alder, red chokeberry, viburnum, dogwood and black spruce will also be planted along the border as a screening, evergreen screening. All of the plants that we are proposing are native upland and our native wetland plants. So they will work within this cleared area. Like I said, we, we worked extensively with the Conservation Commission in order to come up with this plan. And we do feel that the, the success of this plan will be, it will be monitored over a period of years as required by the conservation permit that was issued as part of resolving this violation. Again, the reason why we are in front of you is because the clearing in greater than 10,000 square feet does require approval of the Norwalk Zoning Commission. Again, this was a mistake. The applicant realizes it was a mistake and we are here to correct this, to bring this to an end. We did see the, the proposed approval, draft resolution that was circulated. We do agree with all of the conditions that are within that, within that conditional approval. Again, we are under a timeframe with the Inland Wetland Commission to have this replanted. Right now, we are going into the best time of the year to replant this in the fall. Over the summer, we couldn't plant because we did need your approval. And we have another violation that we'll be talking about coming up after this. But that being said, I think this is, well, hopefully, I think this is a very straightforward proposal in front of you. We're just trying to correct the situation and, and basically put it back to a manner that was, I don't want to say better than the existing, but over time will be same or better once the trees reach full maturity. So that being said, I can take any questions regarding the plan if you have them. But, but again, this is a fairly straightforward thing. We did, like I said, I don't mean to beat a dead horse. We were in front of the Wetland Commission for about four or five months going over this plan. They did have a lot of input in it, which we appreciated. And we're just looking to move forward at this point.
When, when do these trees reach maturity?
So it's typical tree, you know, 50, 60 years, but the height of these trees will be 30 feet within 10 to 15 years.
So to the, to the extent that the trees that you cut down were providing, for example, some sound deadening for the neighbors, that's not going to be accomplished for 10 or 15 years. I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure this really resolves the issue.
So we're planting in a density tighter than what was removed. So every tree that was removed, we're, we're replacing it on a ratio of one to three. So every tree that was removed, we're planting three trees. Unfortunately, you know, mature forest trees, there's, there's no other alternative. We have gone out and looked for the largest stock that is available in nursery size, which is generally two and a half to three inch caliper. Anything larger than that, it's pretty impossible to find. We've sourced the trees. We know that we can get them and put them in. So for this particular issue, I mean, we can't, the, the density of planting it any greater than this density will just lead to problems in the future when the trees be, become fully mature. They'll just start growing into each other.
You may, you may indeed be right about that. But it still doesn't address the issue of serious sound annoyance for the neighbors. I'm wondering if there isn't another solution in the form of a sound barrier between.
Well, we will be addressing that in the subsequent, subsequent application that we'll be discussing in a minute. We do have.
Brian, let me, let me time in for one second, please. Good evening, members of the commission. My name's Eric Bernheim. I'm a partner at FLB Law in Westport. My former partner, Rick Costantini, submitted these applications. He's no longer with the firm, so I'm jumping in now. As, as a little bit of background, when Brian explained that there was some bad advice when these, when this area was clear cut, the basis of that was that the property owner had spoken to the neighbors and the neighbors wanted a berm, a sound barrier berm there, a landscape berm. And the Penna, Penna Construction was happy to provide that. They felt, they believed that the setback for the wetlands was 50 feet, when in fact it had recently been changed to 100 feet, which is why we got into a bit of hot water with the Conservation Department. They're also unaware of the 10,000 square foot clear, clear cut regulation by the Planning and Zone Department. Now ignorance is no defense. So we're back here kind of hat in hand to try to address this. But this violation came about with the best intentions, where we were trying to provide the neighbors with that landscape buffer berm, the landscape berm as a, as a sound attenuation. However, when we proposed that to Conservation, they would not approve it. They approved this planting plan. So what we've done is, and we filed this all as one application originally, and we were advised by staff to separate it into two. But our next, next application, which is the next public hearing on your agenda tonight, you're going to see that we are proposing to relocate our material bins along that side of the contractor's yard, the already approved disturbed area of the contractor yard. And it is our intention that those material bins, which when you came on the sidewalk over the last week, you saw were very full with, with materials, that those will serve as that, as that berm to provide sound attenuation. So we do intend to address that. Unfortunately, we can't address it in this because we have to appease both the Conservation Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission. And this was the plan that Conservation had, had approved for the restoration. We will be addressing the sound issues at the, at the next hearing. And when these trees start to fill in and these plants start to fill in, it will be even better than it was prior to. I question how much, you know, mature, you know, 50, 60, 70, 80 year old trees provide for, for sound attenuation through when the canopies are well above where the sound would, would travel.
I, I will also add, we, we did provide, so this black spruce, that is a screening tree. It, it's not, you know, people say arborvitae, but black spruce is a native tree. We have planted that at the request of the neighbors along the border. So that will provide also a visual screening. And, you know, I don't want to say a ton of sound attenuation, but sound attenuation and visual attenuation.
So can I just double check that I understand this? Neighbors wanted a berm, which, to be honest, I, I don't know what a berm is, but they wanted a berm. You were fine with putting in a berm. The first step to doing a berm was to cut down a whole ton of trees that after the fact you discovered you weren't allowed to do without prior permission. And also that the berm plan wouldn't work? And now, is that correct?
Well, the berm is going to be located within the new 100 foot upland review area of the Conservation Commission. And when we proposed that to them, they rejected it. So the berm was going to be, a berm is essentially, you know, a hill.
A hill. You were going to put a hill in.
We were going to put a hill there that.
Cut down the trees, did you cut down the trees as part of the first step to put in the hill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carey, I have a question for you on the planting plan here, specifically as it relates to the table with the tree sizes and such. The, the sizes represented, are those diameters, heights, what's height you're looking at?
That's height. It's either done in diameter or height, but generally a six foot, six to eight foot tree is two and a half inch caliper. Like I said, you know, when you spec the trees out, we try to look for nursery stock local. I can, you know, I can specify anything. If it's not available, it doesn't do much good to anyone. So we did, you know, try our best to find stuff that can be sourced locally. So two and a half inch caliper tree is generally about the size, the largest tree you can find at, in this quantity at local nurseries.
Thank you. And as it relates to the black spruce, which you were describing as providing screening capabilities, I see here that it's listed as five to six feet tall. Do you have a sense of what the diameter of that tree would be at time of planting?
So again, evergreens aren't necessarily done by diameter because they have multiple branching patterns. So, you know, it, it will be close to that a little bit bigger, like a big Christmas tree. I mean, if you could think about a six foot Christmas tree that you'd be bringing home, you know, and then that will be planted along the border. You can see, you can kind of see how close they are. They're about 10 feet apart. And they'll, they'll grow in pretty quickly to each other.
Okay. And then additionally, you mentioned that you haven't started on the planting yet, but are hoping to start soon. I agree with you that it is a good time of year as someone who just planted a tree. When, when would you guys look to be starting on the planting of these trees?
Immediately, we're under a timeframe. The, actually, the wetland permit required us to do it by June 15th. But I've been telling them we couldn't move forward until we resolved this. So we, we've turned this around as quickly as possible. Past June 15th, you're outside of the planting season. So, and obviously it's been very dry this summer. Now is really the critical time to, to move this along. We have till about early, late November, early December to really get this in unless we wait till the next spring, which we don't want to do.
I agree with that. Thank you for preempting my next question, which is, when do you need to get things in the ground? So, thank you.
Any further questions?
I'm unsure if Amelia is on, but do staff have any additional comments? Or wait, sorry, we have a public participation. I'll wait.
If there are no further questions, we can go to the public hearing. So we will go to the public hearing. As usual, I want to say, remind you, you can only speak once. So say everything you need to say. We don't time your comments, but it really doesn't stir your chase to make more comments than needed or to repeat yourself. We need to get your name and address before you start speaking. Brian, can you bring over and give further instructions?
Sure. So if anyone would like to speak regarding this application, you can use the raise your hand tool at the bottom of your screen. You click that once. And if you're dialed in on a phone, you would hit star nine. And with that, I'll bring over Jake Klein and Jess, might need to make you a panelist. To get over here, let's see. Yeah. Are you there, Jay?
Yes, can, can you all hear me? Oh, okay, great. Perfect. Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for having us. For the record, my name is Jay Klein. I'm a partner at Carmody Law. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Mr. Peter Wilson and Mrs. Karen Wilson. They are residents at 178 Pakenock Trail. Their property is located partially in New, New Canaan and partially in the city of Norwalk. And they're just, their property borders the area of interest that Mr. Carey was outlining in the, in the restoration plan. Before I get into this, I will say to your point, Chairwoman Wells, I do intend to speak in the other, the, the subsequent public hearing that the applicant has put forward. So I just want to make sure that I can speak both during this application and, and during the next application for comments that are germane to application 2025-49.
There are two separate public hearings.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. You know, of course, my clients are particularly and uniquely impacted by the clearing that took place on this property. And I think to Mr. Scholman's point about, you know, how does this all work in terms of sound impact? Might make sense to make a decision on these applications, keep hearings open and closed and make a decision contemporaneously as they're separate, but, but they are related. To the extent that the plantings are designed to attenuate noise and prevent impact of volume and other disturbances coming from the property, dust, things of that nature that we'll be discussing momentarily. I think perhaps a, a good idea to do a couple of things. Number one, require that there be a landscape maintenance agreement. That's something that is put on the record of this public hearing, recorded on the Norwalk land records and clearly outlined, referenced the plan that, that Brian shared on the screen. Note that city officials can inspect whenever necessary to make sure that the plantings are being maintained as, as promised. And ensure that any trees that are lost between now and then. And ensure that any trees that are lost between now and then are in fact restored. I don't think it would be unreasonable, but Mr. Carey talked about, Brian talked about, you know, the, the value for attenuating noise. And I did not see in my review of the materials, any acoustic analysis provided. But, you know, perhaps some evidence in terms of impact on decibel levels for adjacent properties would, would be helpful and informative to you folks on this commission in making a decision. And I think certainly important that any schedule is abided by, and, and perhaps setting a clear timeline, attainable goals, but defined goals nonetheless, to ensure that planting shown on the plan are installed in, in a timely fashion or planted in a timely fashion. So I will speak to other issues in the next public here, the next session of this hearing, as you mentioned, Chair Wells, and appreciate everyone's time here this evening. Thank you.
Next, I'll bring over Alina Zico. Apologies for mispronunciations.
No, that was perfect. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Great. So first and foremost, obviously useless to point it out now, but I, I feel I have to voice it is that the decision to put this type of a business in the middle of a AAA residential area was just completely asinine, in my opinion. But the original usage for this was supposed to be storage. There was not supposed to be work and machinery and grinding rocks and banging and huge booms going on all the time. I have been emailing and calling the owner, I'm going to say probably for the last four or five years, trying to figure out a way to mitigate the sound. All the noise is ridiculous because it starts at every hour of the night. And the lights and et cetera, et cetera. We've put up a fence to block as much as we can, but that's really inefficient. It doesn't do a lot. As far as the, first of all, the storage containers asking, acting as a berm is pointless for us. Actually, I don't think it's going to do anything for anybody unless all of those storage areas are going to be constantly filled, which is not the case. They're going to be, the, the amount of debris or whatever is in those storage bins is going to be fluctuating. But in either case, it doesn't do me any good or my family any good because there isn't going to be, it's not going to affect the noise and the lights that are coming to our property because we are on the northwest. We are to the northwest of the property. We are right at the driveway to Penna. And there's nothing blocking, nothing. So as far as 46 and 48 Carter Streets are concerned, both of those properties, at least that I can speak to, it's not going to help either one of them. Going back to the comments, talking about the trees were originally being cut down to, to facilitate, facilitate a berm. That is an outright lie. Those trees were cut down to increase the workspace for Penna and nothing more. They got caught and then they tried to backpedal. And ever since it's been, oh no, we're, we're such a great neighbor. We're really trying very hard. No, they really are not. I have requested so many times that they stop with the noise in the middle of the night. We can't, and now the latest thing has been that they are idling their trucks in their lot. And of course it's going directly into my backyard. My elderly mother can't sit outside. She already has a breathing problem. We can't keep our windows open. We've had to get light and noise reducing, canceling drapes for all of our bedrooms. I mean, this is not enjoying our home. This is, this is ridiculous. Now, yes, they were supposed to be replanting the trees that they cut down by June 15. And I don't understand what they're looking to resolve. I think they're just, all of the, all they've been doing is putting this off and putting this off and stalling and creating more time until it's no longer the season to be planting. And I, I can almost guarantee you that at this point, there's going to be another stalling tactic. So that as much as they would say, oh, you know, we don't, we're, we're not going to be waiting until next spring, they will. And as for regarding the canopy and the sound buffer from the trees, was, am I correct that the gentleman said, oh, in 40, 50 or 60 years? This is needed now. They cut down mature trees now. And now we have to wait 40 or 50 or 60 years for this canopy to develop, for these trees to develop? So they can, so that we can get back what we initially had? That's all I have to say.
Alina, can you just give us your address quick? Sorry, I didn't ask for it earlier.
I'm at 46 Carter Street.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise your hand tool or hit star nine if you're dialed in on a phone. Bill and Mary Ann DiMarzo.
Hello, can you hear me okay? Yeah, terrific. Thank you for your time tonight. I reside, and my wife and I reside at 1 Clem Lane. And we are fortunate that our neighbors on, on Parkinock Trail and on Clem Lane to our right serve, serve, serve as buffers. So we do not have a line of sight into the Penna yard. Nor are we exposed to the same level of the light and the noise pollution that, that, that our neighbors are. But we are out in the neighborhood basically every day, multiple times a day, walking our dog, jogging in the streets. And it doesn't take us to get far off of Clem Lane. Either going into the Norwalk side, which, which we are in. So, so like going on to, going on to May Drive, going on to full, 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 full Mar Drive or crossing into the New Canaan side and, and heading out onto, onto Poconock Trail, out to Carter Street to hear the noise coming from Penn's yard. And it's not the kind of noise that you associate with a residential neighborhood. It's not the, you know, swish of passenger cars that becomes like ambient noise or the sound of, you know, lawn service with their leaf blowers, which, which is loud, but you know, it's temporary. You know, it's going to be over in 15 minutes or 30 minutes. These are, these are, you know, heavy equipment noises coming from this yard, dump, dump trucks and, you know, and tracked equipment. And, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a noise that is so different and so loud that I do want to speak to just a little bit of, a little bit of, and really it's ancient experience. But, but, but my father was an operating engineer. He, he ran a crane in, in, in a materials yard down in Porches. That is very similar to the Penna yard. And I worked in that yard summers for five years. And the noise in that yard, granted it was 30 odd years ago, was deafening. So when, when, when the applicant talks about the noise barriers and my neighbor who just spoke talks about the noise levels and the, you know, and the planning, hopefully, you know, to like help us or solve that, I just want to, you know, I'm, I'm sure that the board recognizes that, that, you know, we're not trying to have the sound of the Merritt Parkway or the sound of New Canaan Avenue blocked out. It is, it is, it, it is noise that is more appropriate for a light industrial area. Referring to the yard that my father worked in, it was surrounded by light industries, by storage yards, by warehouses, things like that, not by single family homes, not even by multiple family homes. And, yeah, I'm going to close with this and I'm going to respectfully ask the panel to, you know, maybe think of this question, both, and, you know, and, you know, maybe ask it to the Penna reps, but also ask you to yourselves, would you want an operation like Penn is moving into your backyard? And at that, I thank you for your time.
We have Sula Frida Velasis.
Hi, can you, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, Sula Frida Velasis, Esquire, married name Hontez. My husband and I reside at 824 Carter Street with two young children. We purchased this property in January of 2017 with the intention of having a family here. Pregnant at that time, the selling point was a very private, large, private backyard where we could not see any of the neighbors. We were advised that there were wetlands. There are some that even go down in the middle of our property, that they would not be touched. And when you purchase property on wetlands, you continue to expect privacy to stay with you. I was, I, I could hear sounds of cutting going on in the summer of 2024. And it was literally on the Friday of Labor Day weekend of last year, where all of a sudden I had a fairly open view into essentially a construction site. It looks like a construction site. And it just, I felt gutted. I felt gutted. And when I called the wetlands committee, I was told, I'm sorry, it's the Friday of Labor Day weekend and we're closing in 30 minutes. I don't think this was a bad mistake. This, in my opinion, seemed, if anything, this is suspicious. I think the timing of it going into Labor Day weekend, to me, would have appeared purposeful. I don't want to take up a lot of time. I just want to say support everything the, the other homeowners have spoken to. I want to thank Commissioner Schulman for your thoughts and for considering the neighbors. Again, to voice that not only does our bedroom and my office face a construction site, I can see it now. It is, it is essentially wide open in the winter time. I, we hear banging, we hear grinding all hours. Forget the daytime, we hear it in the evening as well, three in the morning, five in the morning. You know, and, and again, I just want to add that when I went to the first meeting of the neighbors with the Norwalk Wetlands Committee, that was the first time I heard the word berm. Did not know what it was. That was when it was brought up as a possible solution to the problem. These trees were not cut down to appease the neighbors. And, and just so everyone knows, you know, it took us a while to kind of all get together. We had, some of the neighbors were speaking to Penna directly. Some of the neighbors were trying to speak to local representatives. You know, I was trying to speak to the wetlands committee. I, I feel bad that it's taken this much time. I just want to ask that, please consider the neighborhood. I am certain that the value of our home in New Canaan has decreased. We are living with noise. There's pollution, the lack of privacy. And, you know, I, I want to know that these trees will be planted and that they will cover the view and that it's not going to take 40 to 60 years to do so. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
If anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise your hand tool now or hit star nine if you're dialed in on a phone. Next, we have Marwan Sadie.
Hello. My name's Marwan Sadie and I'm, Elaine is actually my wife. All I wanted to throw on there was, I also wanted to thank the commission for hearing us. I know that your jobs, when, whenever you have public hearing, you probably don't have the happiest people on earth commenting. So I appreciate you all at least taking the time to hear our concerns. You know, I, I grew up in Florida and I moved to Connecticut 25 years ago. And one of the things I love about living here is for many, many months of the year, we can sleep with our windows open and it's a beautiful thing. When you live in Florida, you don't get to do that. You have two seasons in Florida, that's hot and January. So, you know, we get to have several months where we can have our windows open. The problem is when we have our windows open here, at four in the morning, there'll be the bang of a dump truck tailgate slamming shut. And if you've heard those in the daytime, they're pretty loud. If you hear it in the dead of night, it's deafening. When you sleep with three dogs in your bedroom, it wakes them up and then you're up. And if it was a one time in a, you know, every few months thing, that'd be one thing, but it's basically once a week. And I don't know what you guys can do. I know that, that the commission here is not the ones that gave this land to Penna. But it's very frustrating to see a company blatantly disregard almost everything that was set, that was set in their variance back in 2016 or whenever it was. Almost every condition has been broken regularly and we don't know what we can do about it. Just the other night, my son texted me because he was like, what is that sound? There was a car alarm in Penn's parking lot going off consistently for over an hour. To the point where my mom, my mom, my wife had to call Norwalk Police Department, non emergency line, like, is there anything to be done about this? So again, we appreciate your time. I know that Mr. Carey is just doing his job and he's just representative of this company. But it just, I watched my wife turn almost purple as she's listening to the, the commentary about the trees. And I just hope that there's something that can be done to alleviate some of the problems that we're having. You know, especially us that live in Norwalk and pay a lot of taxes to Norwalk. So thanks a lot.
And if anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise your hand tool now. Or hit star nine if you're dialed in on a phone. And then just reference like part one of a two-part public hearing. So if you have comments regarding the next application, you'll be able to do so. Seeing nothing further, Ms. Wells. You needed Galen.
All right. I will close the public hearing then and we'll go on to have the.
Can I just?
Or rebut?
Yeah, can I just provide a quick rebuttal? Cause I just want to clarify some, some of my comments and also some of the requests. So again, we, we understand that the tree cutting was done in error, but that's why we're here in front of the commission to rectify that. This process, again, it's been a two-part process. First of all, it's been inland wetlands. We've gone through that process. That had taken several months and there was a lot of back and forth and input from that commission. As part of our approval from that commission, and I just want to show you, because attorney Jake Klein was asking for some additional safeguards, those are built into the wetland approval. We did have to post a bond. We do have to post a bond. I have to submit a final landscape plan that has monitoring requirements. So those things are all baked into the wetland permit that has been issued. If we do not follow those, follow those specific conditions, then again, it, it would be a violation. And the inland wetland commission has the authority to bring us back in front of their commission to basically impose fines or further violations or bring us to court. So, you know, the carrot stick approach, they're, they're, they have a stick that they can provide in order to make sure that this work is done. This work will be done. We have to do it. If not, we will be in a continuous violation situation, which obviously the property owner is, is not, is not willing to do. He wants to resolve this. They're trying to be good neighbors. Just as far as when they talked about the maturity of the trees, I was talking about what is the long-term highest that the trees will grow? The typical red maple and a lot of those trees are 50 to 80 years. That doesn't mean that in five to 10 years that those trees will not be providing screening. They'll be providing screening the day that they're planted. And the reason they're planted in a, in a density that we are providing is to make up for the total height that is lost when we remove the trees. The density is replacing the height. So they will act as a good screening buffer as soon as they're installed. Plus there will be a dense shrub layer, which will also grow up and act as a screening buffer. Again, this, this plan was gone over again with a fine tooth comb with the inland wetland commission until they approved it. If, if you don't approve this, we are kind of stuck in limbo about how to move forward on this particular issue. So I, I do request, I do request approval based on. uh, on this particular issue. So I, I do request, uh, I do request approval based on, um, the, uh, draft resolution, um, and we agree to all those conditions. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to clarify what Brian just said there, if, um, i- if we have to wait until your next hearing for a decision on both applications, um, we're probably going to lose this planting season, which means that one of the goals of, you know, Jay's comments and, and some of the other, uh, comments were to get these planted and get them planted as soon as possible, but without your approval, we can't do that. We need, we need resolution with you folks as well. So there's other things that can be addressed in the next public hearing. We feel that this is a plan that should be approved. This, this public hearing is exclusively about that clear cut and the restoration plan. It's not about the operations on the site and the such. Um, so we're asking that you approve the plan, that conservation approved, you can incorporate all of their conditions into this, uh, approval as well, and we'd love to get these plants in, um, as soon as possible so that they're, um, so they're in this, this season.
Lou, we can't hear you. You're muted. You're, you're muted. We can't hear you, Mr. Shulman.
You're muted, Lou. Can one of the hosts, uh,
Yeah, Lou, you're, you're muted.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Uh, what I, what I, what I was saying is that, um, when we're, when people are, when we are talking about the, the second hearing, we're talking about the hearing that's following this one. So it's not going to delay, um, your ability to plant. Um, and I strongly recommend, uh, that we wait until we hear that. But again, in terms, uh, even of resolving this issue, to the extent, uh, that, um, um, sound deadening has uh, been, uh, in any way significantly affected by, uh, the cutting down of those, uh, trees and bushes and other plants, uh, that, um, a sound barrier, again, in the form of an acoustic barrier, uh, may be part of what we recommend, um, as a result of this hearing. But again, I, I'm, uh, holding, um, uh, open, uh, my opinion until I, um, uh, have heard all the testimony regarding, uh, that second hearing. Um, so I'd be inclined to make a motion, uh, that we hold, uh, this, uh, hearing open uh, until we've concluded the second hearing.
We, we're, and we'll be utilizing two, um, memos or just one?
No, I, I, we have to take individual action on each of the items. So, uh, we'll take two, we'll take two separate votes.
But this one needs to be decided earlier than the second one, because if they're going to get the, the planting begun, if they're going to begin the planting, which is not to say we couldn't wait tonight and vote on it. But I believe I would recommend that we vote on it tonight.
I'm not suggesting we not vote on it tonight, uh, Galen. I'm just suggesting we wait until after we've completed the second public hearing tonight.
I disagree with that.
I don't understand.
Yeah, that was kind of what I was getting at. So could we just address the point that you're making now without having to do that or?
You, you can, except that, uh, the applicant, uh, has said that they were going to uh, address this other issue in their second, um, hearing.
I don't, what? I guess, Lou, what about what could come up in the second hearing? Do you think would change our opinion about whether they should replace the trees?
I'm not suggesting that they not replace the trees. I think the trees need to be replaced. But I also personally feel at this point, uh, the, a sound barrier needs to go up.
That would be addressed, that's the, the second hearing that we would address that. That's where we, that's where we discuss this, uh, subject.
I, I agree with that.
Whether to do the trees.
Yeah, everybody else.
If we required them to put a sound barrier in this area, they would have to go back to Wetlands Commission again. Um, I, I think we should vote on this application to restore the wetlands in accordance with the Conservation Commission's order and then when they have the next hearing on what it is they want, that's when we put the conditions on, if we're going to, uh, for sound barriers.
Yep. Does that make sense to you, Lou?
No, it doesn't.
Because we can't put the sound barrier in this area. The wetlands people said we can't.
Uh, no, they did not. They said that, uh, they couldn't put a berm in. I'm not speaking about a berm. I'm talking about, uh, sound barriers, for example, sort of like the ones uh, that we had put in, uh, at the South Newark Railroad Station, uh, for the development there. That's, it's simply a form of offense.
My experience with the Wetlands Commission is, is that anything that's going to be done in that hundred-foot area has got to be approved and they're not big on artificial, um, structures, man-made structures in the wetlands.
Richard, with all, with all due respect, I'm more concerned, uh, about the neighbors, frankly.
Well, I am too, but you know, the, the sound barriers can be done in the, in the, uh, active area of the property, not in the woods that's being put up.
Right, exactly. The sound barrier would go on the Penna property on the other, on the Penna side of it, not on the far side where the trees are going.
They were talking about moving all of the storage bins to act as a sound barrier and, you know, that may or may not be a good idea. I don't know, but behind them, where they border this wetland area is where a sound barrier could go.
But it wouldn't be on the, on the, on the wetlands at all.
No, would be, I'm saying on the, on the active area of the, uh,
Exactly.
But could they?
Uh, Steve, I hate to do this, but I'd like some feedback from the staff.
Thanks. I appreciate that. I think, I think you could handle it both ways. I do think you can address it as part of the, uh, second application because the applicant is proposing to modify, uh, the arrangement and use of the active area by, as Mr. Rowena stated, they're going to, they're proposing to shift the bins and those kind of, uh, that piece of the operation to the north side of the site. So you could, if you felt that that either A raised eyebrows or was inadequate to address the sound, you could address it at, at that stage. I do think it's important, and I think you're all in agreement, to get the approval on board now because you know, because we got materials late for the second application to review them. We don't have a resolution prepared for that for tonight, so I don't think you're taking action on that necessarily tonight anyway. So I would think it might be a good idea to, um, to, to take action on the, the remedial piece of the application. And it, and quite frankly, I think the, the acoustical fence, whatever that is, I think the applicant might need to have some additional information provided and we might want to have somebody give us a, a thought or two on what was proposed as well. So that there is like a, I think there's a three-week window between tonight and your next hearing on this. So maybe, um, like I said, maybe take action on this one and then address it as part of application two. I think jurisdictionally, you, you'd be, if you felt that wasn't appropriate, what they proposed, you'd be more, more than within your rights to require additional measures.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I think that the consensus now is to move forward on this matter. And then we'll open the hearing on the second. Uh, is everybody in agreement with that? Is there a, um, is there a motion? Is anybody interested in making a vote, Darius?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Is there a second?
Why kind of moved and then they moved, so either or?
You, you moved, who's, who's second? Darius made a motion and, uh, Richard second. Okay, so do we have a resolution?
Is this a motion to approve?
Yes, it's a motion to, to approve the planting only. You know, the planting plan only.
To approve this first?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
As a question to staff, can we have a condition that these plantings must be done before November? Like they need to be done in, in a timely manner? But Steve, you're muted.
Thank you. Uh, yes, uh, if you, if I would say it provided the, uh, uh, Mr. Williams and Mr. Rowena are in agreement that I can add that in right now.
I am. I don't remember a specific date in November that was mentioned, but November first, November fifteenth, whatever, Richard, Darius, you guys were interested in.
Well, I think it was represented that they have all of the plantings, uh, sourced and that they're ready to move immediately. So I, I would, I certainly wouldn't have any problem with saying they have to start before October first or something like that.
Great.
Do you want to give them a, a, a completion date? Is that what you're looking to do? Cause there is condition number seven, um, talks about this, but I think it might be more appropriate to add that and then change it to a, a finish date. I didn't, I honestly, I can't recall if they had in their plan how long it would take to, to install all the plants, but if we want to give them, you know, if, if they get, you know, assuming they get their approval tonight, they can, you know, if they got them sourced, they could probably start right away, I would think.
Do we want to do prior to November first?
To finish? That's a big job for a month and change.
I, I don't mean to interrupt. I know the hearing's closed, but I think December first would be reasonable. We're not going to plant after there's frost starting to form in the ground. Um, and, uh, again, it's, we have sourced these trees, um, and we are ready. Um, but I think that's reasonable, um, to come out there and prep the site, uh, to make sure that this is all going in. It's not just the trees. It's also creating the, under the shrub layer as well. Um, so it will be, uh, you know, a week or two of planting and prep to get everything together.
Um, is before Thanksgiving holiday unreasonable?
I, I think that we would just be splitting hairs between Thanksgiving holiday and December first at this point, but.
I'm just trying to expand. Okay, thank you.
I get you. I get you, but that'd be another ten minutes of discussion.
Got it. Okay.
Is it number seven acceptable to the, to Mr. Williams and Mr. Rowena?
Yes, to me.
Okay, and then I added number nine too, if you wanted to just confirm that as well. That's kind of backing up what the Conservation Commission did, but just kind of firms that.
Can I add that we received a letter, um, from a lawyer that spoke sort of outlining a whole bunch of violations of the original twenty seventeen approval. Obviously, that's being dealt with or whatever through the violations side of things, zoning enforcement. Um, but in this letter, it's asking that before we approve any of these, we require that they come into compliance with the original twenty seventeen thing. Um, and I just wanted to say that, you know, I feel really strongly about zoning violations and enforcement and, um, if, if the enforcement team has found that what's in this letter is accurate, I hope they're having to pay a lot of money and, um, that we do something, but I don't see why that should hold up our approval of planting the trees.
Exactly.
But I, I don't, I don't want to ignore the fact that in addition to the specific tree thing, um, there is this larger issue, according to that lawyer's letter, of ongoing significant violations of the original, um, special permit.
Yeah, and I, it's a good point. I think that would be something maybe we can pick up on and let the applicant address during the second hearing and then you can see if you're satisfied with the, how they're addressing that at that point in time too.
Thank you.
Steve, um, in, in a similar vein, did I see correctly in the, in the letter that was shared from the Conservation Commission that they have to cease use of the property or of, of its use while this is in progress, or is the site still being used and operated today?
Hey, you mean the entire site as, as the operational yard?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think they will be doing, or ceasing operations, no.
Okay, okay. I, I think I misread that then. Okay.
I, I, I wouldn't guess. I, I'd have to go back and read that individual condition. That probably related to areas that were outside of the bounds of their, their approval.
I see. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I, and I was, I was thinking similar in this and wondering if it's, it's worth reiterating as a condition, like operating hours and such from that previous, uh, approval, um, to make it clear that, you know, heavy equipment usage at.
Then we should do that in the, in the second one. Not, that's really, it's just the planting.
Okay.
Okay, so are we ready to go to a vote, do you think? Is, is, is everybody ready to go to a vote here?
Yes.
Okay, so Steve, can you do a roll call?
Certainly. Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Shulman?
Uh, based on the staff's comments, uh, reluctantly vote yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Looking forward to the next one, yes.
Ms. Linkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Tabachnik?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byring?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
You're not alone, Lou, but yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
That's a reluctant unanimous vote.
Right. I have a question. If we, we don't have a resolution ready for the second hearing. And I, there no doubt will be quite a bit of testimony for the second hearing. Um, and we will be holding the second hearing open. Is that correct, Steve?
Uh, uh, not necessarily. You, you don't have, you might not have to. I, I think you'll, you'll end up, I, I, I think you'll figure that out at the end. I, I would say, you know, there's a lot of folks that I think, if I recall correctly, this is the second time it's been on the agenda and I think we initially thought the public hearing was going to occur at a prior meeting and then we ended up, I think, opening it and continuing it. So I know there's a lot of folks who probably want to speak to this tonight who aren't intended, so I, I would just, maybe my recommendation would be to go forward with that public comment and then we'll see if, see where we stand. You know, you won't vote tonight, but you may be able to close the hearing tonight.
Now, if, if I could just make a comment as well. Um, I was kind of hoping, uh, that maybe the applicant would want to come back with, uh, more information, especially about the sound barriers rather than start this tonight with no resolution and no plan, uh, for a sound. I'm assuming, um, that, um, they probably would think that that's a good idea to have that in the presentation.
Yeah, I, I, I just add one quick thing and I know it's not what everybody's going to want to hear, but I know the other applicant that's on for a public hearing has a definitive time crunch in terms of getting, um, paperwork up to the state of Connecticut in order to receive funding for things. So I just want to throw that into the mix as well.
Have to finish then, we have to finish the public hearing on sound community tonight.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Steve, how?
That's a whole different.
If, if there's going to be an extended discussion about things like sound barriers, um, and we close the public hearing, um, we're not giving, uh, the, either the applicant or the neighbors uh, an opportunity to comment on that later information that we're going to receive after we've closed the hearing. How do we deal with that?
Um, so you, what you could do, what you could do as you've done in the past, if, if you, if that was at the end of the hearing, you said, we want you to come back and provide us a, 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 some kind of engineering report or report on a sound barrier where it could be added. Uh, you could have the public speak. Speak to that one element. Uh, you know, they had the opportunity to speak to any new information included in the hearing, so you you could restrict it to that. You've done, you've done similar things in the.
Even though the hearing's been closed?
No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't close the hearing.
Oh, okay, so you have to leave the hearing open.
Yeah, but you know, the moving the bins to attenuate the noise. The bins are going to be loaded and unloaded. Correct? So I don't see that as attenuating the noise. That could even be noisier. Than parking the vehicles over there. I mean, it seems to me. And we don't want to spend any more time on this than necessarily discussing this. But it seems to me that we should. Ask them before we go into the second hearing to come back to us with a noise attenuation plan.
I agree.
I do.
Yeah, may maybe maybe hold off on any further kind of substantive discussion on this, and then if you want to. Um, either, um, Mr. Carrier, Mr. Bernheim want us. Address that particular point before that hearing starts that then we can decide the course of action.
Do we have a statutory deadline on?
That was, I don't know if Eric knows, top of the day I asked Brian and Amelia if they knew because.
I think tonight, but we can give you an extension to the next meeting, and I think, you know, hearing what the public said at the last hearing, what the commissioners are saying now. Um, we have some ideas for some sound attenuation that we can add to beef up this plan. Um, I think it's a good. I think it there's some good ideas that we're trading back and forth now, so I would. Um, be happy to postpone this until the October meeting. It gives us three weeks, uh. To talk to an acoustical engineer and and give you some more detail on. Um, on 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 the plan for the acoustical, um, sound attenuation. Uh, concepts that we've been floating after listening to everybody.
So just just for just for, uh, obviously, there's a long record with this, uh, property, but. There was as part of the original special permit application, there was an acoustical evaluation done. Which we have. Um, and we will have updated based on the plan that we're presenting to to provide. Alternatives that will work for, um, the applicant and and the neighbors.
Yeah, I think we also may want to discuss work rules, like what kind of work and how often can you be working past? You know, kind of pocket. You know.
I I'd like, I'd like to ask, uh, that, um. If if you're going to update that, uh, plan. Uh, that you get it to us. Uh, in enough time for us to review it before the next, before we, uh, open the hearing.
I I. Since that's not something I do directly, I'll do my best, uh, because I that would be another. Uh, discipline doing that, uh, but we will make the calls tomorrow. Um. And again, we we do have a framework of that plan. So that that, yes.
We've also provided, um. Sorry, we've also provided some responses to staff's comments and the, uh, to Jay Klein's letter and and all of their concerns, and those are part of the record now, so it'll give staff time to. To review those, and if there's still concerns, we can address those prior to the next meeting. I think it'll be much more. Efficient, uh, use of everybody's time if, um, if you give us a little bit more. Uh, time to get our ducks in a row and, um, and propose this new plan. It's not going to be a drastic change. Um, to the plan, we think we're just going to add more, um. Um, more more sound attenuation, um, uh, stuff to to address some of these concerns. So a lot of what you have already on the record is going to be what you're going to see, so I don't think it's going to be a. Um, a long review other than the, uh, acoustical report that we're that we hope to get in enough time.
Steve, you had another comment?
Yeah, I have two quick things. Uh, thank you, Ms. Wells. Um, I I Jay Klein, who's the attorney, represents at least one of the neighbors, maybe several, but if he, I'm typically, you know, we're not doing the hearing, but if he's got like.
Steve, I can't hear you.
Oh. Sorry about that. Uh, Jay Klein, who's the attorney for at least one of the neighbors, has his hand raised, and I'm assuming he's got a. Procedure question or comment that might be relevant to our conversation, otherwise we're really not in the testimony phase, so maybe. If we could just let him do that, and I had one other recommendation after Jay speaks, if that's okay.
Okay.
Hey, folks, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm I'm Jay Klein. I'm I'm the other, the other lawyer, the other guy, as, uh, Commissioner Tabernak said earlier. Um, you know, I do. I guess I'll direct this to Steve, uh, since we're not in a, Steve and Brian, since we're not in a public hearing and. You know, parties aren't supposed to be communicating with a commission, uh, uh, outside of a public hearing on a pending application. Um, but just a a a appreciate the 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 microphone here for a moment. You know, our, my client and the neighborhood. Were notified of a hearing taking place in, I believe, was the middle of August. My clients were then told that the hearing would be continued to, I think it was September third. That was then continued to this evening. Um, I think only to, not I think. I I know only to find that they will not be heard at all until yet another evening, uh, uh, next month. Uh, I I I know they find that disappointing, to say the least. I know, know that. You all, uh, have had a a long night already. You have other important matters ahead of you. This is important to to. Uh, my clients as well, and I think what was heard. In the last hearing, what you hear again, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a breakdown of trust, uh, and a breakdown. Uh, erosion of the neighborly relationship that should, uh, exist between my clients and Brian's clients and. And Eric's clients and. And to to to. Not have a chance to voice their concerns. Um, you know, in the course of the hearing earlier, they were told, you know, save those issues for later tonight, and then to find that later tonight is. You know, later next month. Um, that that's not a message that, uh, is is not one that we were expecting after waiting three other, showing up three other nights and and showing up this evening, so that's all. Um, I. Say at this point, um, I think then I think the night is young. Perhaps we can start on issues. You know, this isn't a rocket science application as as as. Brian and Eric alluded to. Um, and we can start public testimony and we can continue the conversation. At another date rather than postpone the conversation. Uh, 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 to another date. So that's all I'd, I'd say at this time. And thank you. Thank you very much.
I'll let you stew on that for one second.
For the neighbors to all speak at a hearing where we're coming to a conclusion. Not to speak and then two weeks later, three weeks later, then we come back. Then we get more information, you know, then we've forgotten what was said. You know, I think having it all said. Together. Would be to the advantage of. The neighbors and to the advantage of the commission. To have a full picture.
Yes, also if the like. The neighbors. Or whoever needs to be able to respond to what the applicant is presenting.
Yes.
And. To, you know, to have informed opinions. One way or the other, um, and we saw even tonight that the neighbors, certain neighbors being present during the applicant presentation. Probably changed what they were going to say if they had. Just shared their thoughts absent the presentation at. You lose something.
So what should we do now? Should let should the commission vote on which course of action to take? How do we decide this, Steve?
I I think you just, uh, you you, you know, if that's your wish, you then you make a motion to continue the hearing. Um, until the your next meeting.
Do we need to open it before continuing? Oh, sorry, Darius.
So we've officially moved on to. This, uh, the second portion of. This application.
Well, we we haven't opened it yet. We're deciding what to do.
So do we want to? Could we take, uh, sound communities? And address them and then, uh, try to do as much as we can tonight with this application?
I I think that we have strongly suggested to the applicant that they come back with some detailed plans to address what we already know. Is the concerns and to open the public hearing for comment tonight before the applicant comes back with. Their revised application to me is a waste of time.
And you and it loses impact. If I hear tonight what the neighbors think and then I'm voting in three weeks. The impact of what the neighbors. Feel will be. Dissipated, at least. For me.
Somewhat distant, yeah.
You know, when, um, this application came before us in, uh, two thousand seventeen.
Hit Mr. Sherman, can I interrupt? I I mean, I think to Mr. Klein's point, we did just need to be careful because we didn't technically open the hearing.
Uh, no, I understand. Um, but when this application came before us in two thousand seventeen, I was the only person who voted against it. So I'd I'd like to say something, uh, to the residents, um. Who, uh, have taken time out of their lives this evening for the hearing. Um, and, uh, that is, I I I think it's in everyone's interest. Uh, and to be honest, the applicant's interest, the neighbor's interest and our interest. Um, if we hold off on, uh, opening, uh, the hearing and hearing testimony. Um, uh, until our, uh, next meeting, I I I certainly understand. Uh, the frustration. Uh, that, uh, the residents, uh, would feel. If we take that action. Uh, but I also understand that I. I think it will better serve them if we do that.
Yes, and I'd like to apologize for saying it was a waste of time. Lou was much more articulate. I agree with that.
Right, me too. Okay, so I think the conclusion that we are reaching is that we will. Postpone this public hearing until our next. Regularly scheduled meeting in October and we'll move on to the, uh, Sound Communities, Inc.
Yeah, can we do a motion, a motion to continue to October eighth, twenty twenty five at six P M?
I motioned to continue. To October twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
October eighth, sorry, October eighth.
October eighth.
I motioned to continue. I motioned to retract my motion and I motioned to continue to October eighth of twenty twenty five.
Is there a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Uh, I'm going to abstain, um. My comments could have been. Perceived by someone as prejudicial. And, uh, so it's best that I not vote on this.
Okay, well. It looks like it's. One, two, three. Four, five. Six. It's fixed. To postpone it and want to. Is that correct? Okay. So that motion passes and we'll move on to the Sound. Uh, Communities, Inc. Matter.
Thank you.
Adam Chairman, excuse me one moment. Um, I'm going to just click off my video. I have got to eat something, but I'm going to sit here and listen.
Okay, and I noticed that Tammy has joined us. Are you there, Tammy?
Yes, I'm here listening. I know that I couldn't vote on the application because I was not able to attend the field trip. Thank you, Galen.
So you're here now and you can, um, participate?
Yes.
In the next.
Okay, that, thank you.
Okay, so who is representing? The next matter is twenty twenty five dash sixty R slash S P R. Sound Communities, Inc., seventy ninth South Main Street. It's a zoning regulation text amendment application. Regarding a pocket park, park. Private spandinched type and a site plan review application. To construct a seven-story, sixty-eight dwelling unit, mixed-use development. It's a public hearing and there will be a report and recommended action. Uh, and I think. Attorney Suchi represents?
Yes, Madam, yes, Madam Chairwoman, I do. Thank you. Again, for the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody Torrent Sandec in Hennessy, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stamford. And I represent Sound Communities, Inc., which is a subsidiary of the Norwalk Housing Authority. Sound Communities, Inc. is the applicant on the text amendment application and site plan application before you tonight. Present this evening is Adam Babinski, the executive director of Norwalk Housing Authority. Lisa Endo of the Housing Authority is the project manager. Leila Marlin of Sound Communities. Vincent Hines, professional engineer with Redness and Mead. Adam Palmer, architect with Amenta Emma. Eric Rains of Eric Rains Landscape, our project landscape architect, and Steve Sapola of Hardisty and Hanover, the project, uh, traffic engineer. Just by way of background. The text amendment and site plan applications were filed on July twenty fifth. Neighbors were notified of the submission of that application by certificate of mailing on July thirtieth. The submit certificate of mailing was then returned to zoning staff and should be in the permanent file. Neighbors were notified of tonight's public hearing on September third. The requisite signs were erected on the Chestnut Street and South Main Street sides of the property on September second and remain in place today. And lastly, the applicant has communicated regularly with the residential and commercial tenants on the property about the status of this project. Mr. Hines, could you possibly screen share the survey for me? And while he's doing that, the property is located at seventy-nine South Main Street, but it also in fronts on Chestnut Street across from the new multifamily residential structures that have been constructed there. So it is bordered by South Main on the east, Chestnut Street on the west, and other developed properties to the north and the south. Since it has two frontages, it's called a quote-unquote through lot because the lot is through from one street to another. The zone is C D four. Today, the existing conditions are a, uh, commercial structure, fronting on South Main. There are other, uh, residential structures in the central and rear portion of the structure along Chestnut Street. So the proposal, this is the survey in front of you. Well, you see Chestnut Street is on the left. South Main Street is on the right of the screen, hence it is a through block or through lot since it has, uh, frontage on streets on both sides. The proposal before you is to demolish all of the structures that exist on the property. And to re to redevelop the parcel with a new seven-story structure. Containing sixty-eight units, all of which would be for low-income seniors who reside in the city of Norwalk. Proposed are sixty-four one-bedroom and four-two-bedroom units. And they would be for seniors age sixty-two and over. Who earn no more than thirty to fifty percent of A M I, so therefore all the units proposed are affordable. Um, we had, we proposed to move this to, we proposed to locate the structure close to Chestnut Street. And then create space along South Main to develop a pocket park along that frontage. The fact that this is a through block created some issues for us in terms of proper development and for for our needs and for the tenants' needs and what we thought would be most appropriate development of the site. So the text amendment before you, and if Mr. Hines, if you could screen share the graphic for the text amendment. It deals with allowing a pocket park. In front of a structure. It this, this is a, um. Example of the various text amendments that are required. To allow a pocket park. Uh, structure behind a pocket park. To revise the table of district standards, um, as indicated to, um. Keep the zero-foot minimum, twelve-foot maximum. But then allow a structure to be located behind a pocket park. Excuse me. And then there are three other revisions that are proposed that are technical in nature relating to a pocket park in this zone. That's generally what what this does. We have five different text amendments that allow us to create the structure as was, as you'll see, and the pocket park in front and parking right behind the pocket park. So to date, uh, oh, excuse me. Next application is a site plan application to allow the development of the site with the sixty-eight units, sixty-four one-bedroom, four-two-bedroom with site parking, landscaping, lighting. E V charging stations. Here's your site plan again. So distance from South Main Street into the site, there'd be the pocket park in the front, fronting on South Main. Behind that would be parking spaces with additional parking underneath the building. Further to the west, the building would commence, and then it would continue all the way to the Chestnuts Street frontage. Um, a walkway from the pocket park would then traverse the southern section of the property, connecting South Main all the way to Chestnut Street. That's an overview of the site plan and the proposal. So tonight you will hear from Mr. Hines, from Mr. Rains, from Mr. Palmer, and also from likely from Ms. Endo and perhaps from Mr. Babinski. So far, we have received Health Department sign-off on August nineteenth. South Norwalk Electric sign-off on August twenty first. Transportation Mobility and Parking on August twenty eighth. Fire Department on August twenty eighth. And then today, the Department of Public Works, W P C A, issued its sign-off for this project, so all requisite city municipal departmental approvals have been secured. The redevelopment agency also undertook a design review of the structure to see if it was consistent with redevelopment agency design standards. And the agency last night approved the project with, um. With some, the incorporation of some of its design review, um, consultants' suggestions. The design review was conducted by B F J. The design review was conducted by B F J. They had some various suggestions to exterior materials, the way the building looked, and Mister Palmer will get into that with you in just a minute. But all of the requisite city approvals have been secured and are now part of the file. So at this point, if you would like, I'd like Mister Hines to walk you through the site plan, followed by Mister Palmer about the architecture, Mister Rains, and then should you have any questions for any of them or from Miss Endo or Mister Bavelski, we're certainly happy to answer them. But at this point, Mister Hines, it's all yours.
Thanks, Liz. Good evening. For the record, my name is Vincent Hines. I'm a licensed engineer with Redness and Mead, and we have offices in Stamford and Wolden. And our office has provided the engineering services for this development here. I'm going to switch back up here. Then just a quick overview. Again, I know Liz just went through it. Our site here is highlighted in the continuous yellow line through lot between South Main and Chestnut with side-by-side and Saint Joe's to the south. The previously developed ten Monroe is to the north, and then the other developed properties across the street on Chestnut Street and nearby to the police station, the train station, et cetera. The site is about twenty-four thousand two hundred square feet, currently developed with a mixed-use and multifamily nature structures with at-grade parking and sidewalks. The total site impervious coverage, which you can see here on this map in gray, is about eighty-two percent with no formal drainage systems in place for collection and/or water quality treatment of stormwater runoff. Kind of described here as well, the site drains in two directions with a portion of the site runoff she flowing out into Chestnut Street where it's collected in city storm sewers. And then the east portion of the site that discharges into the city storm sewers in South Main Street. The proposed site, let me go to this one actually. The proposed site includes your city standard streetscape elements in the form of street trees, which are actually in the pocket park area, lighting and sidewalks. And mostly that is a continuation of the pattern previously installed over at ten Monroe. And then the site also includes, you know, onsite drainage improvements to meet requirements of both the zoning regulations and the city drainage manual. And worth noting, that streetscape package will eventually be continued under a kind of an ongoing redevelopment agency project in the neighborhood on the Chestnut Street side. As Liz indicated, there's ample public realm space in the form of the park along South Main frontage, and then the publicly accessible walkway on the south side of the site that connects South Main to Chestnut Street. The park space is separated kind of into two, but they're both connected via different paver treatments through the driveway and public sidewalk areas. So then this kind of northern park space is about nine hundred and seventy-five square feet in total. And then the space here on the south side of the drive entrance that continues out to the Chestnut Street frontage is about six thousand square feet in size. So in total, we're providing close to seven thousand square feet of public realm, publicly accessible areas onsite. The proposal here does include a slight increase in impervious coverage, and by slight, I mean about a hundred and twenty square feet. Although it's counted towards site impervious coverage, there's also six hundred square feet of green roof area provided on amenity levels of the structure, which provides additional benefits to water quality as well as some level of attenuation, but not accounted for in this report because it's there are soil trays and planters that have at least six inches of soil, and that's what's giving you some of that attenuation in water quality volume. In addition to those green roof areas, we do have an underground infiltration system proposed in the east basin that's connected out to South Main Street infrastructure. That system consists of forty Coltech units, again underground, and below the kind of uncovered parking area outside of the building footprint. That system captures a majority of the roof area for the building that you can see here separated again kind of into an east and west basin limits and is collected and that treatment is provided via volumetric control with a meter manhole that then is collected and again discharges into the city storm sewer in South Main Street. The remaining roof area is collected and piped into the Chestnut Street infrastructure. In this case, there's a decrease in total area tributary to the Chestnut Street infrastructure, so we've met T P W's requirements for stormwater management to Chestnut Street. And then via the infiltration in the green roof area, we're reducing peak rates of runoff and volumes of runoff up to and including the one-hundred-year storm as its tributary to South Main. In total, with this collection system, seventy-eight percent of the site area is treated via the underground infiltration system and green roof, and seventy-seven percent of that is the site impervious coverage, which exceeds the seventy-five percent requirement of the zoning regs. We will have connections to your typical utilities. We'll have a sewer, sewer and water connections out to Chestnut Street. We will have electric currently shown with a new transformer between the uncovered parking and the building, connected to South Main Street infrastructure. And as Liz indicated, D P W and W P C A have both issued their sign-off memos as of this afternoon with just standard conditions of that are typical to their review comments. Again, worth noting, the proposed site plan also includes a sediment and erosion control plan just to help provide the guidance for erosion control and dust control in order to minimize any potential impacts that may occur during construction. And just while I have it here, one comment that the fire marshal had was to make sure that any E V electric vehicle parking spaces are outside of the building footprint, so we are proposing four spaces, and they are the four spaces closest to the transformer, again, outside of the footprint. And then we have our adequate handicap parking spaces as well. With that, unless there's any questions, I'll pass it on to Adam.
Any questions for Mister Hines? Mister Palmer?
Great, thank you. Madam Palmer, I'm a Senior Associate and Licensed Architect with Amenta Emma Architects. We are based out of Hartford and also have offices in Boston. I'm going to share my screen and actually turn it over to Eric Rains. We continue the discussion on the exterior of the building, go through the landscape design and the pocket park, and then after that, we will come back to focus on the building itself.
Thank you, Adam. Eric Rains, for the record, landscape architect. So as Vincent described the site layout, the components of it and their locations, I'll just focus on how we provided the finishes and the layout of selection of materials that would occupy the spaces that he mentioned. Starting on Chestnut, as Vincent mentioned, the street edge would be consistent with what was recently installed north of the site, continuing that, the brick pattern, the concrete, and what's the standard? And as Vincent mentioned, it'll continue farther south under future efforts. The same standards exist across the street, so the whole, the continuity is becoming very evident on the street edges. There's a planting zone between the west edge of the sidewalk and the facade of the building. We had input from the redevelopment consultant about how and what to locate in there, which we provided and satisfied those concerns. As with all the planting on the site, the intention is to establish a plant palette that provides a broad seasonal interest with deciduous trees, evergreen trees and shrubs, perennials and ground cover throughout the planted area. The walkway that Vincent mentioned along the south edge of the property connects over towards South Main. If you'll notice, it's like sort of a plank design with an irregular edge facing the south property line before the privacy fence. And we opted to go with an irregular edge so that it would just, as you walk down and look down the opening in particular, the plant material would be able to come in and out of the edge as opposed to just a straight line like a, you know, a typical sidewalk could be. And that continues over toward the South Main where the property chogs south and actually gets several feet wider, which is very conducive to having the pocket park located in the larger portion of the site. And again, planting, you see the mixture of of tournament trees and canopy trees, and then screening that wraps around the parking spaces so that they're visually separated from South Main and from the users of the pocket park. The irregular paving edge continues into the pocket park, and there are three zones there, the north zone, which is planting with some with three seating elements. Those darker rectangular shapes are elements that are provided for seating. The center portion is vehicular access off South Main, and then the southern portion. There's two more of those rectangles for seating. Those would be a masonry block kind of element. And then the regular edges of the paving is intended to allow the plant material to sort of flow in and out around those seating areas so that they're when you're in the seating areas, to the greatest degree possible, you're surrounded by vegetation that has, as I mentioned, the broad seasonal interest. Along South Main, it's again the same city standard with the brick zone at the curb and then before the concrete sidewalk. There's site lighting throughout the site, and all of that is in conformance with the zoning regulations. And further in the packet, we have some images of what that is. So generally, yeah, generally, that's the materials layout for the site. The next image on the bottom there is just an enlargement of the pocket park portion of the site. You'll notice that we continued the plank paving across the drive aisle in that section, continuing the patterns that exist both on the north and south. The objective there is to allow the drive aisle to, you know, to be the same-looking material so that it helps the whole space read as one as opposed to three individual spaces. So if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric. So now moving to the building, we'll start the ground floor. Starting at the left, which is the Chestnut Street side of the building, main entrance for the residents along Chestnut Street in the center. Comments that were received from the design review were ways that we could further accentuate the entrance, and as we get to the elevations, we can discuss that further. But you come into the main entrance, mailroom to your left, which is with two offices for staff, a community room and utility space, and then at the far end of the lobby would be two elevators that serve all seven floors and a stair that serves all seven floors. And then access to the covered parking area, which provides twenty covered parking spaces. Within that, there are two accessible spaces, and then trash room, and then a second egress stair to serve the building. Moving up to the floor above, now we enter the first floor residential units. As was outlined, the property will have sixty-eight units in total. We are working with the zoning regulations to allow for the density increase for workforce housing on this site, which would give us a maximum of seventy-two units per the acreage of the site. Working with the parking requirements and the limited space available on site, we could only feasibly park thirty-four cars, which then allowed us to max out at sixty-eight units within the building. So here on the first floor of the residential portion of the building, we have twelve one-bedroom units, four that face Chestnut Street, four in the middle in this courtyard, four on the right that face South Main Street. And then on this level, on top of the parking garage, there is a resident amenity deck that's available for all residents throughout the building. Two entrances, one on either side of the amenity deck. And when you get out of that deck, there is a walking surface. There are four seating areas, and then a mixed-use artificial turf space where you can play botch or have other games. And then everywhere else on this amenity deck would be planting surface. We provided a planting buffer between those scene areas and those four residential units that face the courtyard. And then along the southern edge, there is a raised planter that is about three foot, ten inches above the walking surface, so it acts as a planting bed. It also acts as the railing slash guard rail for protecting the residents from the edge of that elevated roof deck. Each of these floors, starting here and moving up, they all have access to two elevators and two egress stairs. They also, floors two through six, have two common areas, so shared space for the residents to have activity space outside of their apartments still within the building. Moving up to floors three through six, the layout is similar to the second floor, but with these floors, you lose the access to that second-floor roof deck. But again, twelve one-bedroom units, access to the common areas, the elevators and the stairs. And then moving up to the top floor, we have set back the elevation on both the east and west facades, the minimum of ten feet, as is outlined in the zoning regulations. And here on those two ends of the buildings, we replaced the one-bedroom units with two-bedroom units, which allows us to meet the housing authorities' requirements for quantity and types of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units within the building. On the roof, we have limited mechanical equipment on the roof, which allows us adequate space for solar panels. As we finalize the design for the electrical loads for the house meter on the building, we will work with S N U to determine the capacity for solar panels at this property that works within their guidelines on their purchasing agreement with EverSource. Moving to the elevations, the prior elevations are on top of the page. On the top left is the west facade facing Chestnut Street. Again, highlighting some of the comments that came from the design review. The left side of the ground floor originally, as proposed, had brick all the way to the end of the building. We have addressed the concerns from the third-party review about highlighting the main entrance to the building, and we have altered the color on that northwest corner so that it brings less attention to the egress door from that egress stair corridor and gives more attention to the main entrance. That entrance is flanked on either side by a wall light fixture. The proposed building signage will be right above that door, and then in the revised landscape plans from Eric and his team, the two beds on either side of that front. the two beds on either side of that front door will have been addressed with additional, uh, plantings and trees again to highlight this main entrance. Moving up to the, the floors above the residential floors, we have, uh, primarily fiber cement siding. Um, in a color and size and texture that is similar to the building to the north at 10 Monroe, which is Sono Central. Uh, so again, pulling colors and materials and textures from the neighborhood so that this new development feels like it is an extension of the, the great development that has already taken place in South Norwalk.
Uh, Adam, Adam, at, at what elevation, uh, does that fiber cement start?
It starts at the second floor. So the ground floor is all brick and, and storefront glass. And then the fiber cement would be at floors two through seven. Uh, moving to the South Main Street elevation, this was the elevation that you'll see beyond Pocket Park and the open air parking area. Again, um, using the same elements as the other primary facade with the brick base and then floors two through seven with the fiber cement. And then, um, that we're framing floors two through six with, um, this, um, fiber cement uh, structure that, that just creates a, a bit of a trap so that it highlights those floors and then creates your, your base metal and top to comply with the, um, city's design requirements. Now our third primary elevation would be the courtyard that overlooks that, um, resident amenity deck. Continuing around to the center of the building, we've used the same materials. The two ends here, um, of those, those east and west residential blocks, these walls are, um, close to the property line and similar to, uh, from Central, the, the two ends of their building that are at the property line, um, are solid walls with, uh, with no fenestrations because of our proximity to the property line. So by creating this courtyard, we've, um, pushed the interior residential units back, which allows those, um, apartments to have natural light away from the property line. And then lastly, um, we'll go to the renderings. Here showing the, the primary elevation from Chestnut Street with, um, Sono Central in the background and then the side-by-side charter school in the foreground. And then moving around to South Main Street, the view through our new proposed pocket park, uh, that acts to screen the open-air surface lot and then give you a view of our building and 10 Monroe behind the pocket park. So with that, I will open it up to any questions that you may have.
Uh, I have a, a question for, uh, staff. Um, and, um, that is, I, 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 I certainly trust, uh, uh, the housing authority. But, uh, has the staff thought about whether there is any way in which, um, the, the, um, uh, change that is being asked for, uh, might be, uh, abused by, uh, another developer?
Yeah, we looked at that, um, and so did Attorney Satchy when she was putting the text amendment together. I think it's, it's going to be fairly limited on properties that could actually take advantage of it. Um, they have to be located in the CD four zone. They have to be a through lot. Um, so there's going to be some pretty natural restrictions on the amount of properties who'll be able to actually use this regulation.
Thanks, Brian.
Commissioner Shulman, when we looked at it, I, I think there were fewer than 10 lots in the, in this particular, in the zone specifically down here that were through lots. There are very few in the city. So I, I think this proposal that relates to pocket parks on, instead of having a structure be a structure that occupies an entire property, I think you won't find many of them. And, and they would, it's related to a pocket park. One thing I wanted to mention before, um, I forget is in this zone, the residential density is one unit for 500 square feet of land area. That would allow 48 units. However, um, section six, 12, four, five B allows you to increase the density by 50%. If, uh, the development contains units that are 30 to 50% AMI. So considering this is entirely 30, 50% AMI, that's how we got to 60. We could have gone to 72 units, you know, 50% more than 48 is 72. But as Adam indicated, the parking constrained the number of units that could be developed. So that's how we arrived at 68. In addition, uh, given the, uh, there's also, in that section, there is also a provision that the parking is at one space for every two units, hence 34 spaces instead of 68 spaces at a one-to-one. Those are all set forth in the regulations and codified. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Palmer? Okay, I, I would like, if possible, Mr. Sapola from Hardisty and Hanover, just to briefly describe his analysis of the parking, excuse me, of the traffic for this site. And then that would conclude our presentation. We'd be happy to hear what the public has to say.
Uh, good evening. For the record, Steve Sapola, Senior Traffic Engineer with Hardisty and Hanover, a licensed professional engineer. Uh, we, uh, provided the traffic evaluation for the proposed development. Um, we looked, uh, both at, uh, trap, uh, site traffic developed by the, uh, development as well as part onsite parking. Uh, for the proposed site traffic, uh, we used the Institute of Transportation Engineers', um, trip generation manual uh, for, uh, the type of develop, uh, type of, uh, development in units, uh, proposed and found that, uh, for the 68 units, it would generate 14, uh, vehicles in the morning and 17 during the afternoon. Uh, the site is located, um, near the South Norwalk train station as well as, uh, the bus lines. So that allows for a 20% credit, transit credit. So therefore we're estimating the proposed site will generate, uh, 11 and 14 vehicles during the morning and afternoon peak hours. Uh, for comparison purposes only, uh, we also looked at, uh, the existing land uses, uh, the retail residential. And if we took credits for those, um, uh, land uses that are to be removed, um, the new site would generate an additional three cars during the morning and actually a reduction of one car during the afternoon, uh, peak hour. Um, now going to, uh, parking, uh, we looked at the, both the city, um, uh, parking co, uh, zoning regulations, uh, ITE parking generation. And also, uh, the housing authority has a similar property, uh, Leroy Downs, uh, Monroe Street. Uh, they provided us with information on that. Uh, so, uh, per these zoning regulations, um, we meet the, uh, the requirement, the, uh, the requirement is 34 spaces, which is what we're proposing. Um, using the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Parking, uh, Generation Manual for the type of development. And, um, and we didn't take any credits for the location being near the train station. Uh, that requires, uh, a total of 30 parking spaces. And, uh, based on the data, uh, provided for the existing development, uh, on Monroe Street, a parking rate of 0.43 spaces per unit were found, which would, uh, equate to a total of 30 parking spaces needed. Um, based on our analyses for the site traffic, uh, we don't anticipate, uh, that the surrounding roadways or intersections, um, will have, uh, any, uh, anticipated significant impacts during, uh, both the morning and afternoon peak hour. Um, and, uh, based on our parking assessment, uh, we believe that the, uh, proposed, proposed site is, uh, providing sufficient parking, uh, for the development. If there's any, uh, questions?
Well, that concludes our presentation to you. If anyone has any questions, if anyone who presented tonight, we're happy to answer them. But we look forward to comments from the public and we'll just reserve some time for any rebuttal if necessary. So.
I have a question. Um, at some point early in the presentation, I thought I heard it said, or I read that all the apartments were going to be at 30 to 60% AMI.
30, 30 to 50% AMI.
30 to 50. Okay. So does that mean, um, maybe this is a question for Brian. You're going to have some units literally at 30% and some at 50%? And like, do you know the breakdown between the two?
If it's okay, I can answer that. So there will be 49 units at 30% AMI and those units will be, um, resided in by the Leroy Downs tenants, our public housing tenants. And then on top of that, there will be 19 new units that are at 50% of AMI. And there will be a new waitlist opening up to eligible seniors 62 and up for those 19 units.
Okay. Thank you. Another question. Um, it looked like there's only one washer and one dryer on each floor to support all the apartments. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is correct. So there would be, um, one washer and dryer on each floor. So for floors two through six, it would serve 12 units. And then on, uh, floor seven, it would serve eight units.
And is that equivalent to similar buildings that we have in Norwalk or is there reason that we think that's enough?
Uh, I believe it is a slight increase on the, um, unit to laundry machine count that exists at Leroy Downs today. So we wanted to make sure that was the baseline at a minimum, um, and then work with the space available to see what we can do to exceed it. So, um, yeah, we were providing one, one washer and dryer per floor, um, to serve the residents.
Yes, it is more than is currently available at Leroy Downs and also at Leroy Downs, it's in the basement. So this is at least on each floor. So it's an improvement.
Okay, thank you.
And we did, um, in laying out the floor plans, we made sure that the laundry was, um, on floors two through six was near one of those common spaces so that it can be more of a social event. Um, in our, um, our research in senior living and, um, senior affordable living, we've found that that laundry is a reason to get out of the apartment and it becomes more of a, a social event throughout the day. So, uh, we made sure that that was part of our arrangement on each floor.
And I apologize if I missed this. I saw that there were at least two offices on the ground floor after the lobby. Is there onsite staff 24/7 or business hours or how, what, what's the deal?
Current plans are for an onsite property manager during business hours, sort of Monday to Friday, nine to five. And also to have a part-time resident services coordinator who is there to provide activities and, and supports to, to the residents. And then there'll also be full-time maintenance, um, as well.
Thank you.
Anything else for our team?
If there are no further questions, we can go on to the public hearing. Again, you know, you have one time to speak. So say everything you need to when you're called to speak and give us your name and address, please. Um, Brian, can you bring people over?
Or if anyone would like to speak, please use the raise your hand tool or hit star nine if you're downloading on a phone. And with that, uh, we'll bring over someone with a good last name, under Baker. Just need to unmute yourself.
My name is Andre Baker and, um, 82 South Main Street. Um, and, um, one thing I'm, I'm extremely concerned in the, um, the traffic uh, um, and parking analysis, um, in terms of the accuracy, um, I'm wondering if they were any true evaluation on, on, on the timeframes and with the initial parking. Uh, um, parking overnight is horrendous. And then you also have excessive amount of traffic in the, um, early mornings at some given time, then you're, um, you're unable to even turn into my, um, my parking lot without have to, you can probably do a, a good count before the traffic light on the corner of, um, South Main and, um, and, um, Monroe Street. You're unable to, you might have to wait at least maybe, uh, a close to 30 seconds or more to even make that turn in there. So I'm truly concerned that the, and, uh, the parking, um, how the parking garage is, is stationed in the rear of the building on South Main Street. Um, I don't think that we're taking into consideration on, on, uh, individual that will be, um, if they're coming up South Main Street, going towards North Main and being able to make that left-hand turn into the, um, parking garage. Or even in the, um, late hours of the evening, when traffic is coming back that way at the same time. So I, I ask that you, you know, review this, um, extensively because it, it, I'm telling you, it will cause a lot of backup. And because of right now, it's, it is a lot of backup. So I hope you would take that in consideration. Thank you for your time.
Uh, next we have Connie.
Hi, um, my name's Connie Cooper. I live at 10 Monroe Street. So I'm in Sono Central. And I'm a senior citizen. And I chose this location as a senior citizen because I can walk everywhere to the library, you know, to the, the grocery store, to the post office. And most importantly, to the train station. And oftentimes I don't take my car out for two weeks because it's just so easy to walk everywhere being retired. You know, I'm not going to work. So I think this is a great opportunity for senior citizens, especially on fixed income, to have affordable housing here. I haven't had any trouble getting out of the parking garage. Um, at Sono Central, we can either exit on South Main Street or Chestnut. Um, so, you know, I, I haven't had a problem getting out, you know, for either one. But I have a feeling that, you know, most of the senior citizens that would be in this building are not going to be going out at commute traffic. Um, so that's just my experience. You know, I can only speak for me. Um, it, it's really not been a problem and I, I absolutely love living here. With the police station right there, it's, you know, you feel safe. Um, I think it's a great opportunity for senior citizens. So, I mean, if you want to ask me any questions, I'll ha, I'm happy to answer them. I'm right there. So I'm really in favor of this.
Thanks, Connie. Um, if anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise your hand tool or hit star nine. Seeing none at this wealth.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Satchy, do you have a rebuttal that you want to make?
Thank you, Chairwoman Wells. Um, I, I appreciate the comments that were made tonight with respect to traffic. But I think Mr. Sapola's analysis adequately examined the, the use, the, the traffic generated by the use, the roadway systems. And his determination was that 68 units for senior low income would not have an adverse impact on the roadways. And that the parking, not only is it consistent and compliant with city requirements, but that his analysis revealed that actually fewer spaces would likely be required. Um, but I do appreciate the, um, property owner's concerns and that he was kind enough to voice them this evening. That concludes our presentation. I would just, uh, call your attention to the standards of review for both the site plan application, which are set forth in section eight dash four dash five of the zoning regulations and the requirements for the zone set forth in table four, dot point three, point one dash H for the CD four zone. All of those standards of review have been set forth in our application. There's no need for me to go over them in detail. But we meet or exceed all the requirements of the CD four zone and the requirements for site plan review. We also believe that the text amendment is appropriate and that this board is obviously empowered with mending regulations when it deems necessary. And I think this is one of those instances where it is necessary and appropriate and would not have an adverse impact.
And would not have an adverse impact citywide. So for all those reasons, for the testimony you've heard tonight and the documentation submitted, city approvals that have been forwarded to you. I close, I close my presentation, ask that you act on the application tonight. And thank you again for your time and your attention this evening.
Thank you. Brian, you had something? Brian, did you have something you wanted to say or?
Yep, I'm muted. Sorry about that. Just because it's a public hearing and there was a text amendment proposed, we did have to refer the application out to deep. I'll just want to put that up on the screen quickly. They did find it consistent with the Coastal Management Act. Just wanted to make sure that that has been officially entered into the record. And then just for clarification, tech staff put together. Some modifications to the applicant's text amendment application. I don't think it changes materially what's asked. It, it permits essentially what they've done. It just. I think we added an image and then just kind of moved around some of the language of what was proposed. Just want to make sure with Attorney Suchi that she has no issues. Either way, whichever resolution you guys come to on the text amendment application.
That was fine.
That's all I had.
Good, thank you. Does anybody want to make a motion to, which takes us to, it's two matters really. We'll vote on the text amendment and then the project. Pardon me?
Lou, you're, I saw your mouth moving, but you're muted.
I apologize. I was move approval of both the text amendment and the project itself. And there were relatively few questions. I just wanted to get on the record that this is basically the second time we've heard this presentation. And we asked quite a few questions first time around.
Right. Okay, so there's a motion to approve the text amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, good. Thank you. Brian, can you put up the? Resolution and the text amendment?
So the first resolution, so this is the amended version with, with staff, staff's comments. Again, it just kind of moves around some of the language that Attorney Suchi had proposed. And then added in the image of the pocket park. As a permitted frontage type. And again, limits it essentially to frontage types for CD four zone and for through lots. So it can pretty much strip.
Pocket park is really a terrific. Thing to have personally. You know, it really adds those street skin.
And I appreciate the inclusion of bounds for what a size of a pocket park is. So thank you for defining that.
Okay, are there any comments on the proposed language of the resolution?
Then just to confirm with Lou and Chapeau that.
I would accept the changes.
As do I.
Great.
Okay, do we want, could we do a roll call vote? Brian or Steve?
Sure, let's see. Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
All right. So the text amendment's unanimous. And I think Lou did make a motion to approve this.
Move approval of the application itself.
Okay.
I'll second that too.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And again, some of the, some of these conditions have already been addressed by the applicant. So I didn't update it, but it shouldn't be. Number four is the long one. I think that's related to the BFJ review, which is also included in the redevelopment agency approval. Number five was the comment from TNP that applicant had already addressed. So that one's kind of already been done. And then after that's kind of boilerplate language.
Are there any questions? Or request for revision? If not, let's take a roll call vote.
Right. Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yeah.
It's all unanimous.
Well, once again, everyone, thank you for your time and attention this evening. And we look forward to bringing this project to Norwalk and to its seniors. Thank you again. Have a pleasant upcoming weekend.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, the next matter is just the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chairwoman Wells, I'd like to drop off now.
Pardon me?
I'd like to drop off now.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you. I just wanted to wait until this one was over so I can vote.
Okay. Just the approval of the, of the minutes. I don't think it should only take us.
Okay, so just for the record, it's really hard for me to download everything in a pack. I'm only able to download bits and pieces. And so this is the reason why I'm not approving the minutes because I don't get everything in one pack. It's like everything is individual. I'm at work trying to download everything.
I would just use the link and then hopefully it will pop up.
It doesn't always work because we have a, we have a firewall and every, you know, it's really hard to get everything. So when I say that I, you know, I can't approve the minutes because I haven't read them, it's very true.
Yeah.
Right. But I do, I, I do manage to download like the, the drawings and all the technical stuff. That's all that stuff comes through. It's very weird. But I can't just download the, the, the simple stuff.
Well, better the important stuff than the minutes. So I guess we'll just let, let you off the hook.
I, I could send those out separately too. That could help. If I just email you the Word doc, it's not a problem.
Pardon?
I can just email you, email you out the Word doc too, so that you have.
Yes, yes, please. Email that to me and it's, it's just easier for me to read it on the screen than having to download and print it. It's very hard to do these things at work.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next thing is we have an executive rules commit, committee. What we really need is, is to appoint a committee that will dominate our new. Or dominate candidates for chairman, vice chair and secretary. For the coming year to take a, take office on November first. I'd like to suggest Dick Cantor, Lou Scholman and me. So it'd be all three former directors. Does anybody? Have any comments or would you like to see somebody else on the, the committee?
No, I guess the three of you aren't running for leadership positions in the next cycle, I guess.
Sounds great.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. Well, should we take a vote on this? To approve it?
I motion to approve.
Okay.
Chair Wells, Commissioner Cantor and Commissioner Schulman being on the whatever committee this is called.
Committee, I guess.
Yes.
Long night. And I will, I will second Ms. Tabachin's move to approve.
Okay, everybody in favor, raise your hand. Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so I guess that we, that committee is established.
The Tammy vote?
Yes, I'm, I approve. Thank you, JJ.
Now we will move on to the acceptance of minutes, the regular meeting of September third. Two thousand twenty-five.
Move that approval.
Okay, is there a second?
A sec.
Okay, all those in favor?
Bye.
All those opposed and abstention? We know JJ is abstaining. Does anybody else abstain?
Do you, were, were there minutes for, for last week for the, for the walkthrough?
Yes, that would be the next item and that's just it.
Okay. I just, when I'm looking at the agenda and minutes packet online, the meeting files. It looks like the minutes for last week were uploaded. For both, like under regular meeting September third. It says the minutes from nine, ten. So, so I'm not seeing the September third minutes for what it's worth.
Oh, and that's weird because on my computer, I see a regular meeting September third minutes and then special meeting September tenth minutes.
You can actually read the minutes, so.
Yeah, so after the executive roles committee, then you have a regular meeting September third and then B, special meeting September tenth. A and B both listed as minutes. So maybe.
Yeah, no, I, I see them listed, but the actual documents under each listed item. It's both the same document when I'm looking at, when I open the actual documents. Just for what it's worth. So that's why I'm not.
I see that as well. Yes, yep.
Can't vote on something.
Fair, my, that's my fault.
Okay. So I'm not crazy.
No, you're not crazy. I just looked at that too.
Do we get to vote on that?
I did have a complaint that, that the meeting minutes for September tenth didn't reflect that Rena was at the walkthrough, so.
I'm a witness you was there.
I'll relay that to Amelia.
Okay.
I'd move the, those minutes of the tenth as amended.
Hey, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Galen, I wasn't there, so I will abstain.
Yeah, I abstained too because I wasn't there.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Okay, all those opposed? And then there are two extensions, Emmy and Galen. Okay, so that's.
And, so three.
Steve, do you have a comment? Any comments?
I, I don't have anything.
I, I'm not going to stay from the last, the last meeting. Because, because it was a walkthrough and it, there wasn't a vote. And I was there, so I approved that one.
I, I get it. It's just being that you were unable to see the minutes itself that, you know, therein lies the issue, but screw it at this point.
Yeah.
Okay, so the director has no comments. Do commissioners have any other comments?
None whatsoever.
Okay, good night all.
The next thing is adjournment, a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, good, thanks.
Is there a second?
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay, good. All in favor, say aye.
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 Good night, everybody.